I'd like to call this meeting to order, a meeting of the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, October 13th at 6:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom and also can be accessed via WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Rule call shows all Committee of the Whole members present at this time. We have the minutes on the agenda of the October 6th, 2021 meeting. We have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes from the meeting? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. You are? Maybe it is or not?
Yes.
Yeah. Is it plugged in? There it is. Alright, good. You're welcome. No, we're not a problem. So, next item on the agenda is the 2022 Budget Review, which also includes capital for each department. Before we get into each item as listed, Matthew, you want to give us any type of overview or update on where we are with the current process?
Yeah, so as you're all aware, this is our third Committee of the Whole meeting. We have gone through all the departments, saving community development for last, along with the TIDs Impact Bees and all of them. Tonight is kind of where we, some decision will be made on if we want to use some of the TID levy to fund these projects. We've also identified some savings in the budget, which those funds can be used to fund other projects or reduce property taxes. But we're looking tonight just to get some final decisions on what projects we want to fund and/or not fund, so we can move forward with the public hearing. Before you, I guess I'll jump ahead a little bit. Before you, I have a memo that I put today describing some of the savings we found in the budget. Aaron and Deanna have worked very hard to do a competitive bid process for our property insurance as well as workers' comp. And as a result, there is about $170,000 savings from 2021 to 2022. You'll see that the majority of that is in the general fund, $123,000 reduction in expenses for the general fund. And below, you'll see the staff recommendations on how we are requesting those funds be allocated. The first line item there is to offset reductions in budget state aid payments. When we began the budget process here, we were making estimates on what those state aids would be. I had budgeted a slight increase, about 1.4% increase over 2021. State aid for a variety of different line items was actually reduced, about $20,000. So that's where you'll see that shift of $43,000. In addition, we are in ongoing negotiations with the police and fire unions. Depending on how those play out, we would like some of the money to be set aside in case things are different than how I had budgeted them. In addition, we haven't got our health insurance premiums yet. I had budgeted a 5% increase, but until we have those final numbers, we are recommending that some of those be set aside in case it is higher than that. And then finally, we are setting aside or recommending $40,000 to be used to fund parking lot items or reduce property taxes or do whatever the board sees fit.
Questions? Trustee Paul.
So if we stick with this budget, based on the numbers you gave me here, do we have an increase in the levy, a decrease? What does our tax rate change to?
So if the board decides to, I'm looking at item three, if the board decides to use that $40,000 to reduce property taxes, the overall, the levy would still increase compared to 2021, but instead of the $98,000, I think it is, it'd be $58,000, which is probably a half percent increase or maybe a little less.
So right now, tax levy is going up about a half a percent?
.7% right now.
.7%. .7% tax increase over last year's. Do we have an idea and understanding of what the other three taxing bodies are doing? Seeing their taxes, their share, what is the total tax to the residents?
Yes, so I'm not sure on Milwaukee Technical College. I do know the school district had released their recommended budget a few weeks ago and theirs did go up. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but theirs did go up. In terms of Washington County, I haven't seen the recommended budget yet, but I can have that information before or by the public hearing or...
Like 1.98% sticks in my mind for the schools.
Okay.
They created a fund to offset expenditure for operations, like $200,000.
In addition?
As part of their budget. Which is part of that increase. You feel almost a full percent for every $100,000.
Yeah.
So it'd be beneficial for us to have everybody's numbers because when we get called, because we're raising the taxes, you need to explain to them, it's not us, it's this group and this group is this group are doing that contribution.
But based on what's being proposed, we are increasing the levy by .7, so there would be...
Yes, but generally, what has come across in years past is everybody else is expanding it greatly and we're modestly expanding it. So that's, I'm just trying to get the information so that when the phone calls start coming, I will have the information to say...
But we lower it, but we don't have an increase and we start making our own cuts and actually lower our taxes.
That's what we're here to do.
I would love to do it. Let's start cutting.
We'll go by the agenda and then we can openly discuss any other point that we've already discussed on the budget. Trustee Kaminsky.
Question for Matthew. So this $40,000 is an addition, what was the other additional amount that we had that we're chipping away at? Was it like $90,000? And then didn't we put the two, took the two squad cars out of the $90,000, which left us, I guess what is my question, to know what our total nut is here?
Are you referring to the TID levy that was, that is not included?
No, I think there was, I think from last year, I'm not sure. We took the squad cars out of it, I know that.
I think if I can take a stab at answering this, the budget as submitted to the Village Board was about $95,000 under the levy limit. And I think that's what Matthew's referring to as a TID levy, the difference being that $95,000 is related to new construction within tax increment districts. The Village Board could go $95,000 above what was submitted. In addition to that, with the solid numbers that we got back on the competitive process for our property and workers' comp insurance, you know, there is $123,000 that's available. And that is where the Village Board could just take that entire $123,000 cut and reduce the property tax levy. If you did that, I believe there would be a levy reduction if you took the $123,000, a levy reduction from last year. We're recommending and...
I see.
That, yeah, that we make up that difference in the state shared revenue.
Basically, we have the $40,000 at the play with.
Correct.
Okay. That's it.
$40,000 and the $95,000.
If we wanted to.
If you wanted to.
Yeah, which...
$40,000 before we're where? At break even or before we've...
.7%.
Raised this $123,000.
If you would want to stay at that .7% increase as recommended, you would have $40,000 that you could allocate to parking lot items or anything else that the board would like.
Trustee Rick Miller.
I do have one question about the levy, .7 increase, however...
That's overall, yeah.
Overall, what was the property value increase this year? Because a $250,000 house last year is not a $250,000 house this year. So the .7 could actually be a reduction in the total overall tax levy.
You know, well, the levy itself is up by .7%. The rate is down slightly.
The rate, the mill rate is what I'm talking about.
The mill rate is down slightly. So I believe that was down about a nickel.
Yeah.
So now how that affects individual property tax bills, it's if that everybody's assessed value changes, you know, periodically and those who saw more of a change are likely to see a bit of a decrease, those whose property values go up, you know, more than average might see a little bit of an increase. But in general, it's, the levy increase is not what's going to make a difference to people on their property tax bill. It's going to be, it's going to be their assessed value and how that changed from year to year. It's going to make more of a difference than what the levy change is at this point.
Under the current, or under the recommended budget, a $250,000 home this year would have a decrease in property taxes by $13 on average.
If the value stayed the same.
If the value stayed the same.
Only on the village portion.
Only on the village, only on the village portion.
Got to specify that. Alright, thank you.
All this that we've just talked about was on a one-page sheet.
And that was provided last Village Board meeting.
I missed it last meeting again. Is it here today?
No, I can print one.
We could go get that if you'd like, or we could email it.
Which either way.
Yep.
Special Ed. Other questions? No other questions? Then we can go to Budget Review, starting with item A. Item A is Community Development Building Inspection.
So before you, you have the 2022 Recommended Budget for the Community Development Inspection Services Budget. Really, the only major change here is the increase in permit revenues that is projected for next year and in accompanying with that, the increase in the SafeBilt contract. For those who don't know, SafeBilt gets a percentage of all permit revenues. So as those permit revenues increase, so does the, so does it on the expense side, I believe they get 62% of all permit revenues. So for each dollar we make in permit revenues, we receive 38.
I saw operating expenses going up by $104,000. Operating supplies and expenses.
So that is where we have the SafeBilt contract. So as we increase permit revenues or as we get more permit revenues, the amount we pay SafeBilt increases as well. So based on the projections for permit revenues, the SafeBilt contract will increase, I think at the line item is $98,000.
Who is SafeBilt?
They are inspection services contractor. We contract out.
Inspector, Village Inspector, we subcontracted out?
Yes.
Yes.
Spent how much on that?
They get a percentage of the permit.
So how much was it last year? Right now for 2021?
SafeBilt, we started, SafeBilt last August 2020. And so we've had about a little over a year's worth of service with them. We didn't have a fixed amount set in a contract, just a percentage, as Matthew pointed out. SafeBilt gets 62% of the lion's share of the permits we issue for building, plumbing, electrical, HVAC. They actually get 90% of the revenue we bring in for plan review services that they provide. That in fact is actually a deal for us because we used to, before SafeBilt, we didn't get any percentage for plan review. That was all shipped out to the state. State recovered those revenues. And there are some revenues that we actually get 100% of. The zoning permit fees that are collected at the time a building permit is issued, 100% of those stay with the village. So it's sort of a mixed bag of percentage, but generally, it's about 60% SafeBilt, 40% for them.
So how much would you estimate that we spent from August 2020 to August 2021? How much do we pay SafeBilt?
It's about... Two, it's close to 500,000.
We could hire five village inspectors for the cost of that.
Can I respond?
Yes, you can.
One, I don't believe so. I know we could get four, maybe three and a half, but the purpose, and maybe I need to roll back a little bit, the purpose for hiring SafeBilt wasn't principally to increase the amount of revenue that we're bringing. It was to improve the quality of the service that we were providing to our residents and customers. Pre-SafeBilt, without getting into a lot of detail, pre-SafeBilt, we had issues, a lot of issues with inspection services and the staff that we had. We're no different than other communities where building inspectors are aging out of the system, if you will. And it was difficult for us to find quality building inspection staff that we could hire and bring. It's a problem that's being experienced by most, if not all, communities in Southeast.
Whereas SafeBilt hiring their contractors, obviously have an abundance of them, so I mean...
Also having contracts with multiple municipalities. We're not, we're not the only one that's outsourcing their inspection services. And you know, this was brought through committee and through the board to vote on and the majority of the board, and I'm not sure how you voted, but the majority of the board did accept the information as a benefit to the village and voted in favor in August to do that.
The decision was made in the summer of 2020. We had some retirements, one retirement planned, and we made the decision to go with contractual services with SafeBilt. Did end up eliminating a building inspection position, but in the end, I feel comfortable with the decision we've made now that we're a year into it.
So we have no village inspectors, correct?
We have, no, we, all of our inspection services for new construction is through SafeBilt. Their inspectors, we have a permit technician who actually is in the building about 30 hours out of the week. And we have a full-time inspector who also works out of the building. And this is essentially his base territory. He does work for other communities that SafeBilt serves in the Southeastern Wisconsin area, close by Cedarburg, Thiensville.
He works for SafeBilt?
Works for SafeBilt.
Not too bad, okay.
So frankly, if you came here to apply for a permit, it may seem seamless to you that the people you're dealing with appear to be village employees, but they're actually SafeBilt employees that work out of the Village Hall.
And there's no delays for any of the developments or for the developers, which also costs them money. So it is providing a better service to our customer.
And that is a key point, and I don't want to belabor it, but it is important to point out that we've had tremendous service and feedback from those that are willing to share their experiences with our SafeBilt staff. It's, in my opinion, it's night and day compared to the way it used to be. Now granted, I too agree with the idea that, man, we're generating a lot of revenue, why can't we keep more of that in-house? Get it? And we're going to try and become more efficient and hopefully be able to keep more of that revenue over time as best we can. But it's important to, in my opinion, to keep our quality of service up as best we can for as long as we can and not fall back into the sort of problems we had before. I mean, we were literally one twisted knee away from not having inspection services to provide to anybody in a community that for the last six out of seven years has been growing dramatically. This year's no exception. I would point out this, that so far this year in 2021, three quarters of the year, we've generated approximately $653,000 in revenue, $60,000 or 11% over our budgeted amount for the whole year. Now with that, I would point out that we're expecting in the last quarter of this year alone, an additional 576,000 square feet of industrial building area between the Dickman III Building, 130,000 square feet, Dickman IV, the Happy Hippo Pet Food Business, 173,000 square feet, EnterCon Corporation is expanding, another 70,000 square feet, and our Capstone One Phase One Project at 203,000 square feet. The estimated revenue, permit revenue from those four buildings is another $227,000. So not even counting other revenue from residential and individual projects, water heaters, commercial additions, we're looking at a possible total revenue of 880,000 2021, which would be roughly 150% of the $592,000 that we had budgeted for 2021. So the community continues to grow and we're projecting that it's going to continue at an even healthier pace for 2022. For that reason, having SafeBilt, where they have the flexibility, it's their responsibility for that 60% of the fees they get, it's their responsibility to provide whatever number of inspectors we need, whatever type of inspectors we need, whenever we need them. It's that sort of ability to flex that is really important to maintaining the quality and the level of service that we can provide.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Jeff, are they on a, do we have an annual contract with SafeBilt?
We do. The current contract is set to expire at the end of this year. And so far, at this point, we're going to continue, we're going to roll over the same service agreement that we have for this year, the same percentages of fee revenue for 2022 as we have had.
And you mentioned that the SafeBilt, we house the SafeBilt people. And when a builder comes in and needs a permit, they see the SafeBilt person, they get their permit and away they go. However, SafeBilt also, this particular representative may represent Cedarburg or other communities?
Allen does provide services as deeded to other communities if he's available. SafeBilt has a very sophisticated and comprehensive inspection management system. It's an online system that they use. It's quite efficient. They actually do their inspections when they're out in the field. They put their notes on their iPad and the information, whether it's passed or failed, can be sent back to the contractor immediately. And that has helped them become more efficient. So they do have a time where they need to run over, at a scheduled time, to run over to another community if necessary. But they know they're responsible for providing the service we need when we need it. So if there was an issue, we'll discuss that with them and they'll have to rearrange their schedule accordingly.
So do we get the priority then, if we house them?
Well, absolutely. For our contract. Likewise, the other community will send somebody over here if our person is overloaded. Yes, for example, Allen is our primary building inspector. He is not certified to do commercial electrical, for example. That's the only service that he can't provide. SafeBilt has a separate commercial electrical inspector that serves probably most of their communities and is able to be, provide that service efficiently as opposed to if we had to hire a separate commercial electrical inspector, that inspector may not, you know, have their dock at full day to day.
So is this a contract that we could negotiate perhaps in 2022 to get a higher percentage and keep some of the revenue?
It certainly is negotiable, but at this point, we've discussed with them the idea of keeping the percentages the same.
Yes, if I could just add to that, that we did look at when we negotiated the contact contract initially, I think our percentages were pretty favorable compared to what other clients from SafeBilt and other similar firms get. I think they were at the time anxious to expand into this area. We were kind of their first big customer in the area. They have expanded services to some other communities and so the 62-38 split that we have is something we'll definitely, you know, each year try to take a look at to see if there's a way to negotiate a better deal, but I think it's a pretty solid deal to begin with.
Thank you.
Jeff, other things to point out?
No, not for inspection services.
Other questions for inspection services? No other questions? Then we can go to Community Development Planning and Zoning.
For you, you have the 2022 Recommended Budget for Community Development Planning and Zoning. Really, no major changes compared to the 2021 budget. Just want to highlight the continuation of the 2050 Plan. And much like the other permits, there is an increase in zoning and plan and commission review fees. The Community Development Director did have a capital project for Civic Plus permitting. We removed that as we moved through the RFP process for our financial ERP system and see what capabilities those systems have, find some synergies there.
Questions? Comments? Contracts? No other questions on that? Okay, good. Municipal Development. Thank you, Jeff.
Before you, you see the Municipal Development Recommended Budget. Looking back, I wish I would have broke it down by line item, but here you see the overall operating supplies and expenses. You will see there is a $50,000 increase in that budget. That is due to the fact that they get a certain, they get the difference of our hotel motel taxes. So we at a minimum keep 225,000 of that amount and then every dollar over that amount goes to the Tourism Council. So this year for hotel, or for 2022, the hotel motel taxes were budgeted at 275,000. We get to keep the 225,000 of that, so the remaining 50 gets budgeted in the municipal Tourism Council budget. Last year, I believe there...
Go ahead.
There was, I believe last year there was none budgeted in the municipal development line. What you'll see there on the operating supplies and expense for 2021 is Fourth of July and other events.
Questions? Questions? Trustee Myers?
Yes. Hearing Kwanas talk about the fireworks and so on and so forth, your thoughts, Steve, in regard to keep this same amount, $8,000 or...
I think that if the Village Board would like to increase the support for the fireworks for Fourth of July, I think it would be appropriate and would recommend that we look for Tourism Commission grant for that increase. And it does appear that the level of revenues that we're expecting from hotel and motel taxes would be able to support that.
Is there a particular amount from the hotel tax that organizations are, if we went to them, maximum amount?
There...
Request?
Any available funds could be awarded. Any available funds could be awarded by, from the Tourism Commission to eligible events or projects that are brought before it. So, you know, the entire $50,000 in revenues could be allocated for events if they were approved by the Tourism Commission.
Would be, what would your recommendation be? I think they had 15,000 this, this past year?
I don't recall. The, last in, in 2020 and 2021, there were a very limited number of requests just because a lot of events were canceled or scaled back. So I'm expecting that, that we'll see more requests coming from different community organizations. I, you know, I, I would suggest that, that the Tourism Commission keep some percentage to, to build a, a reserve for, that could be utilized for some larger projects, you know, but I would say somewhere between 25 and 50% of the revenues would, and setting those aside so that if there were any larger scale projects that came forward, the Tourism Commission could support those like they've done in the past for the Dinesville Pavilion. There was a contribution, for example. So I think it's good to, to create some reserves for those types of, of larger one-scale, one-time projects. But I, I think and now that we're coming out, out of the pandemic or out of it or wherever we are in it, I'm not sure I'm qualified to, to state that, but it, it probably, we, we haven't convened the, the Tourism Commission in a while and I think at the beginning of 2022 would be a good time to get the group together and, and start to talk about some of those guidelines going forward.
So basically speaking, a motion could be done anytime in the next year to take care of the situation if that be the case?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? No other questions? We go to impact fees.
First up is the police impact fees and there are no major changes in the two recommended Following police is the fire impact fees and again, no major changes in the two recommended
Questions? Max?
For you, you see the library impact fees. The only major change is the non-transfer to the debt service for the building.
If I could just point out, add to that, the, I, I think as the board is aware, the, the final debt service payments on the initial construction of library were made earlier this year. So that is, as there have been some conversations about expansion of the library and enhancements of the library facilities, I think part of that conversation could be to look at the library impact fees, do a review, determine how those would fit in. There may be opportunities to increase impact fees for, for, related to the library or reduce them. I'm not sure what that answer might be, but as the conversations on potential library expansion take place, there should be some consideration of impact fees and they can play a role in, in financing whatever the board decides to do.
Trustee Myers?
So you're saying that some of the impact fees could go forward into reserve or whatever they have for potential expansion in the future?
Yes, until, until there's a decision made or actual expenses that are being made, the, any impact fees that are collected will be kept in the fund here and set aside for eligible purposes related to the library. And then if, for example, the village board decided at some point, next few years to, or, or sooner, depending upon the board's preferences, to expand the library, a portion of the debt service could be funded.
Right.
Through the, the library impact fees going forward.
Yeah, over and above what they already have in reserve.
Correct.
Thank you.
So on any additional construction to the library as it currently is, like it's the second floor, the, the entire amount of whatever is in that reserve could be used as the impact fees towards it?
Well, and to clarify, at this point, there's, there's not much in the, in the impact fee fund reserve, but, but yes, if it's an expansion of capacity, then the, whatever, whatever reserves we have in impact fees could be used and impact fees going forward could be used to fund debt service.
Trustee Jan Miller.
And Steve, where is the fund for the, it's a savings fund, the Ameritrade, $800,000 that the library has?
The, the county reserve.
Correct.
That is not actually part of the village budget.
I see.
It's a, it's a separate fund that is, is not, not controlled through the, the village budget process.
Oh, I see. But it is available.
That, that would be available as well for expansion projects. I think as we've discussed, it would, that, that does require a match from the village. So every dollar spent out of that, that reserve from the county needs to be matched by a dollar from the village. Impact fees would be one way that the village could, could match those.
Any more on library? Okay, next.
I think last for the impact fees, we have the recreation impact fees. The only major change would be a non-transfer of funds to the capital project fund. That is due, historically that, that has been used for large capital projects and as there are none this year for, for recreation, we did not transfer any money. There is the ability to use these impact fees to fund the Recreation Trail Network Plan. Just wanted to mention that in the parking lot.
Just to expand a little further on that, that was an item that was initially in the capital budget request. We removed it from the capital budget because it, it's, it's not something that typically we would bond for because it doesn't directly result in the, in an asset that the village owns. But as an alternative for the village board, if you would like to fund the trail network plan, you could use recreation impact fees to, to fund that plan.
Is that it then for impact fees?
Yeah, um, yes.
Okay. Anything else for impact fees? All right, then we'll go to historic preservation.
There are no major changes in the 2022 recommended budget for the historic.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of slow right now, so we're still looking for homes to put on historic preservation, so. We have sent out some cards in the past and probably do a little bit more, but that's really our only expenses to send out some, some flyers in that. Most of the people that are part of historic preservation waive their salary or their stipend. So we, we've had very little cost.
Microphone, please.
This is a voluntary, historic preservation committee works on voluntary properties. So a property owner would come to us with an application. We review it to make sure that it's a historic property and then it becomes a historic designated property. So.
Have you reached out to the railroad station as the, possibly been one?
I, I haven't, no. And I don't know if they have in the past. Again, it's, it's more on architecture, so the architecture would have to be the same, which it typically is. But yeah, any, any commercial or any residential area that is designated historic preservation by the committee would, would fall under that.
Any other questions? We can go to assessor.
Much like the previous impact fee budgets, there is no major changes in the recommended budget for the assessor. One of the parking lot items, and this has been in front of you before, is a reassessment in the 2022 fiscal year and that'd be $50,000. As we discuss parking lot items later, that will be on that list.
Trustee Myers?
So are the three-year contract we had for them, was that correct?
I believe so.
October of. The, the contract expires in October of 2022.
So we have another year then?
Thank you.
Well, and if I could just expand a little bit on the parking lot item, so the board is, is, knows what this is. This is something that would be a good idea for the village to fund. When we went through our reassessment, what was it, two years ago? In 2019, the previous reassessment had been five years or longer?
There were a few issues.
For other reasons, so.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry.
I don't know how this happened.
But, but as a.
Bill's got two.
As a standard practice, it is, this would, this would shorten the reassessment cycle so that we would be reviewing property assessments more frequently and that generally ends up in a better result because the changes are smaller, that waiting five years or seven years in between reassessments leads to large swings one way or another in the properties that cause a lot of concern and distress among the residents. So, you know, I think, I, I think this is something, I, I think staff would really like to fund, but when, in trying to fit all of the needs within the available money, there just wasn't room for that at this point. So I, that, that is, that's why it's a parking lot issue out there for consideration for the board, but I wanted to explain that a little further.
So. Trustee Kavinsky.
What is the industry standard for doing that? Is it every three years, every four years? I know you can do whatever you want, but I mean, is there a best practice?
You know, I, I would say best practice, best practice, I would not say this is a standard or what everyone is doing, but every two years.
Okay.
Is, is sort of the gold standard.
We did ours in 19, 20, so we are definitely due for that. However, it's only $40,000 that we have to play with in our extra cash fund here, so to speak, and that's 50. So that would be $10,000 from somewhere else, right?
And, and I, I would say the, the 40,000 is a, is a guideline that, that we've provided to the board just to provide a framework. You know, that, that there is some flexibility in that 40,000. Could that, you could put 40 or 50 to an item like this and put 30 in the contingent fund. There's some flexibility.
Our total surplus that we've come up with so far is what for 2022?
120.
That is it. That's, that's, that's the total surplus.
123.
23.
And then the 95 is?
I know, I know. We were just talking kind of off, we thought it was bigger, I guess.
No, I was talking about how we funded the police cars. Wasn't that last year's?
That is through this year's year.
We had 300,000 surplus.
What happened to that money?
Didn't we? Really close to it.
And I, I get confused about years and budget time. Are you talking about 2021 or?
What's left over?
Whatever we pulled the, the funding for the police squads from, I thought that was like around $300,000 surplus.
393. Capital or from?
No.
300,000 was the, the latest numbers that we had received, yes, the.
2021.
2021 and.
Not capital, none of that's capital, so general fund.
So that, those are for one-time expenses, you could use part of the surplus from 2021 for some of these items.
And something like this to me would be a natural for that because it's a one-time expense. You never want to do anything reoccurring, obviously, like salaries and things like that, but this I think would fit right in there.
I, I think this would work, this could be funded from that surplus.
Are we pretty firm that we know we have the 300,000 at this point or it's, it's hard to tell for until you get into the new year, isn't it? Oh, 2021.
20.
Yeah.
We will be, and just because I have the microphone in front of me, but.
We think the chair's on wheels.
We are, we are really working on the final, final numbers with Baker Tilly. We're, it's on the agenda for the, for DGF on Monday, so we're about as, as positive, as confident, as positive about the 300,000, which we possibly could be.
And at least we know it's going to be 200 plus. So I mean, we, so we can work with that in our minds tonight and making some adjustments.
Some things to think about when you're looking at the assessor though is, you know, as was mentioned, there were some larger adjustments made when this assessor who was new to the village at that time came through with the assessment that was decided to be done within the first year of their contract. And a lot of the, of the changes that were made at that time were told to us were made and it was more of a correcting or reckoning of what was done incorrectly from the previous assessor. So as I look at their contract and how they presented it to us and how heavy it was first year and then maintenance for the other two years, I would make more sense to me to bring a new assessment forward in their next contract and not award them another $50,000 into the three years that they already have on this contract.
And that's up in, we have one more year on that.
October of 2022 is when that contract would be.
Makes sense. That makes sense. Okay.
And then if we want to look at every two years, then they can offer us something and we have more to negotiate with than just awarding them an additional 50,000 on the contract we already agree.
I like that.
Okay.
Is, is that accurate appraisal out of Appleton? Is that who we're using? Is that?
So associates, we don't say accurate appraisal here.
I apologize.
Bad word.
Trustee, trustee Myers.
Yeah, I was going to say originally for them to correct, if I remember what it was, the 32,000, but I think.
There was also some additional costs for converting that.
I'm talking about the corrections that we had to do. They had to do corrections before they even started.
Right, but then there was a converting cost that we put on top of that. So I'd rather look at, at any reassessment and assessment in every two years as a new contract.
Well, I understand, I have no thoughts with that. I'm just, I was just giving that amount. The other thing I was going to mention was in regard to, you talked about every two years, but that depends when that assessment value comes. If that assessment value is around 92.5, you don't have to have another.
It used to be 5% plus or minus.
Yeah, we, we would not be, there's not a requirement to do it every two years, but I was just saying that is what I would say sort of the gold standard is, that to, to reassess every two years and that way the, the changes at residency are, are smaller and there's less of a, there's less sticker shock.
Well, like I say, that particular company, without going through it, it was really bad. I mean, what the figures that they were given was ridiculous.
Trustee Bo.
Just to, when the contracts came through, we asked for one year with an appraisal and two years without, so we knew what the company was in charge and we have it done anytime in the next year. And it does come back forward next year, I would suggest that we do that again. Give us one year with an appraisal and two years without, so we know what it's going to cost us to do it.
Anything else on assessor? Okay, next item then is debt service.
Before you is the 2022 recommended budget for debt service. At the top you see the expense, bottom revenues. There was a slight decrease in expenses that was due to the end of a 2011 note, but then we had this, this year's borrowing. So they almost off balance, but there's a slight savings there. On the revenue side, most of the increase in revenue is a transfer from the TIFs.
Transfer from, from TIF four?
It, it's money that is collected from the, the revenues from the Tax Increment District and transferred over to pay the debt service related to the Tax Sync District. That, that did change this year to pay.
Oh, so it was more.
Oh, so it was more than expect, correct?
Okay.
More than projected. Questions on debt service? What's its impact on the, on the levy percentage?
There was a slight decrease in, in debt service. That decrease was about seventy-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven. It'd be that, that first line on, on taxes, though, that would be the debt service levy.
Okay. Other questions? Trustee Myers.
Are there any ones that we can actually consider paying off ahead of time?
Not, not at this point. We, we do touch base with our financial advisor periodically about refinancing some of the debt with lower interest rates. At, at this, at this point, and I think the last conversation we had on that was two or three months ago, there was not anything that met the village's criteria. It's something probably when we get done with the budget that we'll sit down with them again and, and check. You know, check and have them take another look. But we're, there, there's nothing at this point that I think that were the, the, the difference in the interest rates would merit, create enough savings to merit refinancing.
Well, just keep in mind that the, the last rate that we ended up getting was less than one percent. I haven't been following those figures, if they're still remaining that way or not. Is that Phil Cossins that you're talking about?
Yep.
That's what I thought. Nothing at this time, sure were.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for debt service? Then we can go to TIDS.
And I'll, I'll touch base on, on the TIDS. There are three TID budgets and just in general. These are just where in the budget we reflect project expenses and revenues from the tax increment districts that were previously approved by the village board and the joint review board. So under TID six, there is not a, a great deal of, of new activity. Just the debt service payments, the administration expenses. And then you see the, the tax revenues coming in. So not a whole lot to see here under, under TID six.
Trustee Myers.
Can I make a recommendation for the new trustees? If you could identify where these areas actually are in place, I think that's very important.
Sure, sure. Great, great, great suggestion, thank you. TID six is the Willow Creek Business Park off of Appleton Avenue. And in background, this TID is, is a healthy TID. The revenues that are, that it's currently generating cover all expenses and debt service. And there is still one property that's open for development and, and being marketed. So eventually, I believe that will, that will go for development. And there is the potential that, that this TID is able to close earlier than projected.
If this is a healthy TID, then how come the revenues are less than the expenses?
Actually, the, the, the revenues are, are five hundred and forty thousand dollars and the revenue, and the expenses are four hundred and sixty thousand.
The difference, so projecting for? So we're, we're losing a little revenue, got it? So we're losing some revenue, but we're still covering our expenses?
Yes.
Okay.
Questions? TID six. Trustee Jan Miller.
When is this, when would this close? We, we're to, to the.
I would, I don't have the, the, the TID plan in front of me. This, this TID was opened in two thousand and sixteen. The projected close date would be in the mid twenty thirties. And at that point, that property tax base, it would go back into the property tax base. And, and actually, the impact of that is, is generally reducing general property tax bills. As the tax base gets larger, the, the, the property taxes that the village, the schools and the other taxing jurisdictions get spread over a larger base. So everyone else's bills go down by a little bit.
Great, and the, the question I have is, what, what are we paying for in administration in general? It's a twenty-one percent increase.
That is, that's items, like, for example, I track my time when I'm helping to put together or review reports that have to be submitted to the state on, on the TID. There's some accounting time that gets spent on that as well. And I think the increase just reflects the actual hours that we're spending on the, on, on review of the tax increment district and putting that together.
That's all village staff, correct?
Not all village staff. It's spread across at least six staff members. I don't have it in front of me, but at least six, not all.
It's a, it's a little bit of a, of a, quite a few things. I think our audit firm, a, a portion of our audit is charged to this, so some of, some legal expenses. But it's all related to the processing of the documents and paperwork that we need to submit on an annual basis.
Other questions? TID six? Okay, next.
TID seven, as you see before you, does show other, some other expenses and an increase of about a little over two and a half million dollars in budget there. And that's related to the Capstone development that was approved earlier this year. And there is a payment that the village would make to Capstone Quadrangle in exchange for the development of the road, flood control, or, or, I'm sorry, stormwater management projects and sewer and water.
Questions on seven? Go to eight.
TID eight, the, the expense side projects improvements for primarily sewer and water and road improvements on Holy Hill Road, or the bulk of those expenses. And that will likely include a, an additional, well, will include an additional borrowing coming up at some point during twenty twenty-two. And that initial estimate of that borrowing amount is included in here as well.
Where's TID seven and where's TID?
I'm sorry, TID seven is south of Holy Hill Road. It, and the, where the new construction is starting here just recently. And then it continues on down by JW Speaker. So it includes the JW Speaker construction, as well as the new building going up for Capstone Quadrangle. TID eight is to the north of Holy Hill Road. That includes the Briggs and Stratton Building, the other buildings that have been constructed by Zilber, the Dickman Building, Dielectric. It's where the new pet, pet food facility is going in. So it's on the, on the north of Holy Hill and west of Goldendale.
Trustee Baum.
A updated sheet is my TID eight is.
He emailed it and printed it out in your cubby.
An email last Thursday, perhaps? With the updated capital project fund and today.
Get my spam all the time.
Maybe you are out of town.
He's getting my spam all the time.
And I, and I apologize, that was my fault, I was late with my homework on, on TID eight, so.
I promise I'm not doing it on purpose.
Looking for an increase. All right, anything else on TID eight?
Questions about additional funding or Holy Hill Road repairs? Nothing. What is the impact of all three TIDS on the levy percentage or increase?
The, well, first of all, just to be clear, that none of the expenses from the, from the tax increment districts are, or come from the levy, from the property tax levy that's assessed to, to residents. The, the state does allow the village to consider net new construction within tax increment districts when, when setting the, the property tax levy. There is the ability of, there's ninety-five thousand worth of net new construction from last year to this year that the village board could add to the levy that was submitted and, and use that to fund other services.
And the debt services itself has no impact?
The, the debt service from the tax increment districts has no impact on, on the property tax levy.
Okay. Other questions? All right, then we can go to health and dental.
First up is the twenty twenty-two recommended budget for health insurance. Next Monday at, at the village board meeting, you'll, there will be a discussion and a recommendation to move to a new administrative team or new health insurance administrator. And those savings are reflected in, in the expense line. In terms of, of revenues, the health plan premiums, I budgeted a five percent increase to premiums just as a budget estimate. The remaining of those changing, changes is due to the individual switching health insurance plans. So that is why you see an eleven percent instead of a five percent.
The, just, just an update, you know, we are seeing increases in employee healthcare expenses. As, as Matthew mentioned, we did just get the results in from the proposals that were solicited by our benefits consultant. And we are going to be recommending at village board meeting on Monday that we move to a new third-party administrator. The numbers were significantly improved from the estimates that we had earlier. I think we're still, as a self-funded plan, they weren't improved enough that I would recommend reducing what we're budgeting at all at this point. But it does give us a little bit more cushion to, you know, to, in the case of more large cases coming through. There are also some plan design changes that we'll be recommending to the village board on, on Monday that will include some additional contributions from employees. Not premium contributions, but increases in out-of-pocket payments that I think will, are helping to hold down the, the cost to the village of the employee health plan.
Questions? Trustee Myers.
I haven't really looked at any questions because it's coming for a DGF on, on, on Monday anyhow, so. But with that new carrier that we have, is that for a one-year contract?
Yes, we, we review it every year. We review the third-party administrator each year with our benefits consultant.
Would it be beneficial to try to go for a longer extension to lock them in, especially one year?
They, the, the carriers, there's a significant amount of, well, there's a lot of reasons why the carriers won't.
Why?
Yeah, but, but I, I, I don't think that we'd be able to find a, a carrier. If we did find one that was able to, it'd probably be at a significantly increased cost in order to, for them to mitigate the risk that they would take on with a longer-term contract.
Questions? Okay, let's show dental, dental.
Oh, next, next slide. Here you'll see the twenty twenty-two recommended budget for dental. You will see the budgeted expenses are down. That is just based off the numbers I run, looking at what each individual plan or what each individual employee has for their plan, and then taking the premium amount and multiplying that through. So the, the estimation would be a ten thousand dollar decrease in dental plan expenditures.
Apparently, village employees have really been flossing and taking care of their teeth.
Any questions? No questions? Does anybody have any questions or would like to go back to any of the items A through I? Okay, let's see, that's no. So we can then go to Jay, which is capital item presentation, including presentation by Grave.
I guess I'll introduce this one. And so the, the, as you look on this slide, these are all items that, that you reviewed as each department has been up. We've talked about the, the projects, capital projects. I, unless the board would like, I don't think we'll go through this line by line again. But we do have some additional information that was handed out and, and hard copied to the board on our five-year capital improvements program. And I think that that was information that we wanted to make sure of staff we got to you before you make final decisions on the, on the, the twenty twenty-two capital budget. And I'm, I'm sorry, our public works director put a lot of hard work into this over the past six months or so. And he wasn't able to be here this evening. So I'll kind of present some of the information here. It was also with due the assistance of, of Grave and our, our DPW, our three DPW superintendents. I, I think there's some important information that's on the report. If you look at the, the summary sheet, that, that looks like this. It, it lays out by category, the total by, for each one of the five years coming forward and then the total for that time period. And it does show that the village has a lot of, of significant capital requirements coming up in, in the future. You know, hitting some of the highlights, the police department. This is showing that there are some ongoing capital needs funded each year. And patrol cars are, are the, the bulk of, of what's shown. But then in twenty twenty-five, there is funding set aside for design of a, of a new police station. And looking at that and trying to fit that in, in, in the twenty twenty-five. The fire department has a very good handle on their equipment replacement needs and actually has that built out for twenty years, what, what they estimate they need. And here you can see that over the course of the five years, they're expecting that capital replacement needs of a little under one point three million dollars. The library, we did include in, in the five-year plan in twenty twenty-six, three hundred thousand dollars for design of, of an expansion of the library facility. Obviously, that's something I know there's, it will be an item for discussion for the village board on when that happens. We just wanted to make sure it was in the five-year plan, so that was a, an item for discussion. Under streets and highways, that's one of our larger categories. That would include one and a half million dollars per year for paving, as well as replacement of things like snowplow trucks, et cetera, that are, are necessary for the, for the maintenance and operation of, of the streets and highways. Wastewater Utility has identified projects over the next five years totaling four million dollars. And, you know, varying by year from four hundred and forty thousand as a, in twenty twenty-five is the lowest to about one point three million in twenty twenty-three. The Water Utility has identified over the next five years about five point six million dollars worth of projects. And I, I would say that that's an area where we do need to do some more work on, on a financing plan for that. How to manage the cash flows and, and relate those to the needs to get the projects done. As I mentioned, when we had the Water Utility up here, that was a, that's an area where, where we have some additional work to do. The Recycling Center has an item in for this year. Park and Recreation identified for the five-year plan, a total of seven point six million dollars. And it does include some land acquisition and items that were a part of the. And that does include some land acquisition and items that were a part of the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. Then, uh, and I'll skip down last two buildings. We, and we did mention this at, at, at the last committee, the whole meeting as well. We, um, uh, had Grave complete a, uh, an assessment of each one of the village-owned facilities and identify, uh, significant major maintenance, um, and, uh, uh, replacement issues, uh, with each one of those facilities. And the initial estimates, uh, that they provided are included under the buildings, uh, line here at, at three-point-six million over the next five years. And, uh, but we have not fully vetted that or prioritized it, so, um, we still have some additional work to do there. You can see that the sheet, we have a large draft sign across this. It is still a work in progress. I wanted to make sure the village board had the basic information, um, uh, in advance of, of acting on the budget. You know, not only tonight, but in November, when, when you formally adopt the budget. But my plan would be that we continue to work on this and bring it back to the Public Works Committee and the village board in January of, of twenty-two, um, uh, where it would be given to you for further review and, and adoption as a five-year plan.
Questions? Trustee Myers.
Did you say that you were also going, a long time ago, show where the funding would come for each one of these?
We have, we have presented information in the past from, from Aylers on financing plans. This, I, I, and we could, and I think should, update that financing plan, uh, to show the, the new numbers. We have much better information than the last time we worked through that process with Aylers. So yes, I think that's something that, that we can work on and, and present to the village board.
Would that be?
I, I think that I haven't talked with Aylers, uh, but I think that's something we could probably do in January when we present the, uh, the six-year, the five-year plan.
Thank you. Trustee Hudson.
Allowed to use any of the COVID relief funds for these projects or no?
It is, it, yeah, there are some projects that I believe would be, um, would be eligible for the ARPA funds. Actually, well, that is also on the agenda for Monday's village board meeting to talk a little bit more. Just give, provide an update on the new guidelines that have come out and timeframe. And I, I think that, uh, when we, when we have the, 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 the discussion and I, we ask for approval from the village board, action from, from the village board on the ARPA funds, we can make sure to identify where ARPA funds could be used for items that are, that are within the, uh, uh, within the capital program.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Did you have any comments about engineering or did I miss it?
No, I didn't, I skipped over them, um, but I can go back. So, uh, there is a total of eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. And that includes items like, um, uh, the, the program that was discussed, uh, last week for village-owned pond survey and restoration. It includes some, uh, intersection approvals. The purchase of land for Cent, the Century Lane road approvals is included in that. As well as some additional funding for, uh, uh, layout and design of roads. And this is a document, the detailed document is one that we can, we'll provide electronically to the, to all the trustees as well. I'm having trouble reading it even with my reading glasses on, so it's, the, the font is pretty small.
So the two-page, this is the detail?
That's the detail.
Okay, thanks. It's like an eye chart.
If you look on the second page, the pink section, um, engineering, it's in the, the, the middle area there. Uh, that's just year one. So if you go over to the column on the far right, it shows the total over the five-year period of eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand.
Questions? Comment? Trustee Kaminsky.
I appreciate having this document. And I think when we meet in January, I personally would like to look at this and start prioritizing because, you know, things are going to slide a year here, year there. And it'd be great to get Aylers in here and let us know how this additional debt that we're going to have to take on. We're not building a police station out of our general fund, you know, just as we're not building DPW building. But let's figure out these chunks and what they're going to mean to, basically, to our property taxes moving forward as certain things are paid for and roll off. When do we roll these on? And I'm sure there's a science to that as well, to make that happen correctly.
Or different bonding?
Yep.
Structures, whether it be ten, fifteen, twenty, depending on what part of the, of the, of the borrowing that it's for. I mean, in some larger building projects, I don't, you know, I'm seeing at least twenty years plus.
Right. I, I think, and, and, you know, I think it's important, um, uh, as we've kind of learned lessons for, as, as I learned lessons, going through, uh, various processes, by having this plan and, and looking forward and then tying it to a financing plan, um, we can try to avoid large shocks in, in people's property tax bills. You know, it's, um, there's no question that doing everything that's shown on this five-year plan is, is going to increase the, the levy for debt service. It's gonna, there, there, there will be increases if we, if we fund all of the projects that are, that are listed in here. However, we can, we can do things with the way we structure debt and, as well as looking at how we might utilize some of our excess reserves to try to, um, ease into that instead of, you know, jumping into the old water all at one time. Just easing in so that it's not as, as dramatic a shock to people, um, with their property tax bills. So, um, yeah, I think that, that definitely having the plan, that connecting it to a financing plan can, um, you know, help to, to, um, uh, make this a little bit easier for the, for the taxpayers to swallow.
Trustee Baum.
So on the colored sheet here, which is the summary of capital expenditures, looks like the sum total for twenty twenty-two is a projection of borrowing five-point-two million dollars. Rhetorical question to the board, do you really want to borrow five million dollars? Second, does the summary of the recommended levy overview, does that include the payment on five million dollars or what?
So, so the, the five million you're seeing on, on the colored sheet includes sewer and water, and those will not be borrowed for. On the screen you see before you, you'll see at the bottom on the borrowing, it is, uh, I have it budgeted at, uh, about three-point-four. Looking at, I'm just going to jump it forward to, looking at, uh, what it looks like after, uh, intergovernmental, uh, revenues, interest revenues, the total long-term debt for you borrowing for is about three-point-five. That is due, the difference between that and the three-point-four is the debt issuance cost you see at the bottom of this one, um, for eighty thousand.
So does this summary anticipate the payment of three, four, five million dollars of borrowing?
Yes, um, I, I want to make one qualifier to that. The, when we, when we issue, issue debt, it typically won't hit, the, the full levy impact won't hit until twenty twenty-three. So, um, you, you know, we issued that in March, uh, and there's semi-annual, uh, principal and interest payments. And typically, there's only a small, uh, interest payment that's due after the first six months. So, um, you, when, when the village board makes a decision to, on how much money to borrow, that, that really doesn't hit the debt service levy until the following budget year. So, so the answer to your question is yes, but I wanted to explain that, that background information.
Sounds like the answer is no, it doesn't hit the debt levy service until twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Both, yeah, both are correct. So the, like, if you, if you change, if, um, adopting the three-point-four million that you see on, on, on that spreadsheet is not going to change that number, so, um, it, it is reflective of, of three-point-four million, but the real debt service impact doesn't hit until twenty twenty-three.
What this number have on our debt service in twenty twenty-three? At three-point-one million dollars in twenty twenty-two, what's that debt service go up to in twenty-three?
This, as long as the board stays at about that three-and-a-half million dollar level.
Borrowing every year?
That's what we've done, we, last year and, and the year before. There, and I'd have to go through and, and review all of the debt service schedules for twenty twenty-three, but, um, uh, this should not impact one way or another. Now, again, I haven't reviewed all of the debt service schedules out two years. And there, I, I, there, there were some things that, that, some, I don't want to use the word anomalies, but the structures were not always level, uh, for issue, for debt that the village issued at, at certain points in the past. So, um, I can't, I can't sit, I can't sit before you today and say that the debt service levy will be the same in twenty twenty-three as it is in twenty twenty-two. But what I can say is that, um, adopting this would not be the cause of any debt service levy changes in twenty twenty-three.
So for the past four years, approximately four years, we have gone and borrowed three million dollars. And years prior to that, we borrowing two million dollars. So, we're just starting borrowing more. Few years, this is going to jump up another million. When you build, build a new building, it's going to go up exponentially, twenty.
That's different, that's different borrowing though.
Yeah, that's long-term, but it, it'll go up twenty-five million dollars to build a, a new police station.
Spread across twenty-five years.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Well, right now you've got a list of, you know, well, it shows five-point-two-six, but budget meeting.
Working from this sheet? Where do you want us to work from as we look at the capital?
Well, the, this is more of a, um, they're, they're bold detail.
Yeah, so, so what you have before you is just the Fund Forty capital project. It does not include sewer or water utility.
Which is perfect.
So, yeah, so these are currently in the budget right now.
What is this new financial management software?
This is, um, a replay, we've talked about this at, uh, at last week's meeting. This is to replace our financial management system. We've gone through an RFP process, uh, and we've recently completed, um, interviews of two finalist vendors. The current system that we have was installed over twenty years ago. It is, uh, and it is failing at, at this point.
Failing how?
Nobody knows how to write COBOL.
And, and there are, it is producing, uh, a variety of errors, um, both in terms of, of things like utility billing, the ability to run reports, um, and, uh, a variety of other things. So this is, I think, a, a much-needed.
So is this three hundred thousand for a vendor or software?
It is for, uh, software and implementation.
So what is the one-time fee to implement and what is the cost of the actual software an, annually?
Uh, so what, what I have budgeted?
Broken down.
What I have, so what you see before you is just the, the implementation. That's not the, the annual fee I have budgeted currently is a hundred thousand dollars.
So it's three hundred thousand dollars to implement this software?
Yes.
To transfer the data, implement, um, it's not just financial management, it's also HR, uh, community development.
What's the name of this software?
The two vendors that we, uh, invited in for, um, uh, demonstrations and interviews were Tyler Munis and BSNA.
BS?
N A.
N A.
So, so those are the vendors, what's the name of the software?
Tyler, Tyler Software is Munis. BSNA, I don't know if they came up with.
I think it's just BSNA Cloud.
BSNA Cloud, yeah.
Specific name.
Trustee Myers.
Is that going to be their software where they own?
That's, um, we would, we would own the licenses. I mean, I guess technically they.
Not the same.
Well, I mean, it's, I, I don't know of, unless you custom-build software that you own it. I mean, you own the licenses.
Yeah, we don't own our current software either.
Or, you know, the, the tools that we're using here today.
License.
By license.
You lease it.
By license.
You pay for, you pay a subscription each year to use it, yeah. So I get it that it's, it's absolutely needed because your current system's failing. Did you try negotiating with either of these vendors? Did you say, yeah, sure, we'll go with you? You need to knock down your initial installation fee from three hundred grand.
We, we will negotiate them when we select a vendor. We'll go through that process.
Going through a process, yeah.
So this is estimated what you're going to pay at the end of the day? Or is this what the bids came out pre-negotiation?
This is est, this is an estimate and it's consistent with what we saw, uh, with the proposals that were submitted.
So the, the three hundred thousand is the amount that was on the proposal?
It's, it's, what, the, the proposals were not identical. One was a little bit lower, um, and one was approximately this amount.
So as you negotiate with these vendors, we can expect this three hundred thousand dollars to come down a bit?
I've, I've negotiated a lot of these contracts and it depends. And it depends, um, in part on the level of functionality that we want to purchase.
You've negotiated a management or a data processing, financial management software contract?
I've negotiated, meant, uh, probably a dozen of them.
What's his background? His financial management?
I spent, for.
Maybe he can create his own.
It's not a standard.
I've, I've implemented half a dozen of them.
The proposals, as we see them, and then we can pick them apart then. Right now you have to plug a number in for possible borrowing for that, when we look at the budget, we have a number to work with. It doesn't mean it's going to be the number, and the final number won't be presented until we go out for bonding. That's if we accept it as the list is presented. And if we are willing to accept all the items that are here or wish to remove or, or question. I mean, this is the budget process that includes your capital borrowing. So if you're, if you have, uh, a quest to lower this, now would be a, a time to, to pursue that and present motions to remove any of these items or add items, if that's what you wish to do. Trustee Kaminsky.
Yes, it is on. Couple of points, just, I mean, I think we all know this, that we, this doesn't get really finalized. You can play around with your capital items right into January, okay? So we all know that before final borrowing, so it's actually February. However, let's just take our list and let's just go down it from top to bottom because I have only one question mark in the whole list. If you look at the three hundred thousand dollar placeholder, we know we need the financial management software. Maybe that price will be less for borrowing by the time we get to February, maybe it'll be more, who knows? This is the best, our responsible, intelligent people who do this all the time, think it's going to be that. Then we move to the roof replacement. We know that we needed the roof replacement, we listened to the fire department about that, that's an absolute need. Fire suppression main line replacement, we know. We know that that has to happen in our village buildings as we move forward. We, we took out the squad cars and paid for that. We have to upgrade the, the Profenix software. The brush truck, staff vehicle for the fire department. I guess that's the one thing I have a question mark by, how important is that? We know we need the, the scuba bottle replacements. That's a requirement. Then you move down to sidewalk program. That's small, and yes, we need to complete sidewalks. $80,000 for land required for constructing Century Lane. Well, we heard from those people, and we know this is something we can't keep putting off. We need the money for that. The drainage problems and improvements, we need the $40,000 for that. The single axle patrol truck and bucket truck. Now, I, I assume that's the plow truck. That's in there every year. We have to replace one of these every year because we're still getting rid of stuff from the 90s-
That's two.
And late 80s. That's two of them.
That's, well, it's one for, each of them are about $190,000. So if you look at the detail from the summary that we had, you had single axle patrol truck for 190, and then you had bucket truck for 190.
Okay, so I guess I would say I know we need the patrol trucks. I'll put a question mark there.
Single axle patrol truck. So, you know, Scott's here, he can tell us the difference between that and the larger, because mostly those larger ones are 300,000 plus. This seems to be a smaller vehicle in regards to its size and, and utility, yes.
Yeah, well, I do want to ask that, but I just want to finish going through my list.
Okay, wait a minute.
1.4 million for asphalt paving. We all agree that's probably too low, but this is what we can afford.
Plus what you have in your regular budget.
Yes, I know that. This, this is, but this is what we borrow every year. It's somewhere in this, between 1.3 and 1.5.
Anybody that wants to lower that number, welcome to-
I would, oh, good luck if you want to lower that number.
I did.
Um, yeah, and Mecklenburg Road lighting, we really don't have any choice in that.
This, this is an additional amount, so it assumes that we, we carry over the amount that was budgeted in '21, and we add the 176. So this is, this would-
That would be together, you have to add them together.
Adding the-
405,000. 5,000.
Oh, you're, you're carrying over from 2021, and then-
I understand that, but we delayed the work in 20-
This would, if, if it's approved as, as presented, we would have $405,000 available. We would rebid this at the beginning of the year and before we issue bonds. If it does come in less than 405, we can reduce the amount of the bond issuance.
Um, the bird netting, I still think that's kind of interesting for 35,000, but I was convinced when I talked about this a couple of weeks ago that we need the bird netting. 90,000 for the Kinderberg tennis courts.
It's, it's 30,000 for the Kinderberg tennis courts and 60,000 for ball diamond renovations.
Okay, and that is for our recreation department. That's not a lot of money to help improve that.
The ball diamond renovation, was that in conjunction with our DPW project, or is that separate from?
It was, it was related. The, the estimates and the review of Kinderberg Ball Diamond came up as a part of the discussion of the, the relocation of the DPW facility. The Parks Department submitted it, even though, even though they knew that the Little League Diamonds will be able to remain where they are because they, when reviewing Kinderberg, they felt the improvements should be made whether or not the Little League Diamonds have to be moved.
Okay, so this is not the ones that we talked about with the DPW?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have a question mark on Parks, the pickup and the tractor loader. So I guess my questions are mostly, we need this stuff. I mean, this, this is where we're at with borrowing now, and if you can get away with less than $3 million, I mean, what do we want to cut out?
All right.
Because all these things are directly related to providing the service constituents expect from us. But I would like to, now I would like to ask the, the couple of things, and that would be, I think, for a highway department, the $380,000 breakout for the bucket truck and patrol truck, and then also, yeah, the fire department, like brush truck, there's three things in there. I know we need the staff vehicle, but do we need all of that?
Hands down here to-
Then he's unlocked, he's just-
Can I make a motion?
Not yet.
Let's go to the floor.
Trusty Kaminsky still has the floor, and she's made a, asked a question of Director of, of highways.
Just Scott.
Just Scott.
Um, I guess the simple statement I would answer for the patrol truck and the bucket truck, as we put this five-year plan together as a village, that was one thing in our department that we try to be real consistent with, is the amount of money that we're asking for year to year. And so we actually have like a 10-year plan between shop for all of our equipment, and you're 100% right, those plow trucks just need to keep coming on a routine basis. We've had periods of time where we've foregone purchasing one, and then we've doubled up in, in subsequent years. So I think just keeping that on a schedule is really important. The bucket truck probably isn't a have-to this year. That's not going to take the need away, so we're going to take that and add that to, again, a subsequent year. And I think just keeping everything balanced, that's what we're trying to accomplish with the equipment. This single axle this year, yes. No tandems. We only have tandems that are out right now. And again, just if anybody cares about that, we try to size the truck to the route. So a route like Mecklenburg Road where you don't have a lot of cul-de-sacs and a lot of turning, tandem axle, carry our salt, a little bit more efficiency that way. Always need to keep a certain number of single axles that are going to get in neighborhoods and be able to haul cul-de-sacs. We probably have more single axles than tandems.
My, my family has become accustomed to seeing the antique truck drive by with the big arm.
I haven't seen that out for a while, but it's like a security blanket.
Used to be the one that always came by our house.
Yeah. It would come by your house. That's probably the only spot it would still come by if it was needed, maybe terrace.
Just the flow when you're driving.
Do you handle parks too now for?
Yeah.
So could you explain-
Park maintenance, park maintenance.
The tractor loader and the pickup. I mean, how important are those this year?
Again, and we had a truck in the 2020 budget, a pickup truck, and that's, again, replacement for parking lots and park parking lots, the building parking lot, and we just keep those on a roll. They're dragging trailers around with mowers down in the summertime. They're just on a roll, and again, trying to keep that number as even as we can. Is it a necessity? No. I will say, just as a complication this year, GM opened up a window for two weeks to order the model year, and we couldn't even get it all together and get it to Public Works and Board, and they had closed the window. So we actually have a truck in this year's budget which we'll be carrying over next year, excuse me, and trying to purchase too, and we'll be talking at length about that with the committee when the time comes. But, yeah, we're having some complications with ordering those trucks right now.
Thank, thank you, Scott. That's all I have.
Now with Trusty Peaper.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the bird netting and first try other tactics such as owls, plastic owls.
That is your motion.
That is my motion.
She made it seconded in discussion. Trusty Baum.
I would agree with the owls, however, based on our budget process, if the owl won't work, then we do without it. So I would like to leave it in the budget. If the owls do work, we can always not borrow it or not buy it and in the system.
Are there other things we can try other than owls?
Yes. Talked about that the other day. There are the metal spikes that you can put on horizontal surfaces, there is the netting.
And where, where, is there anybody here that can give us the- Inside, the birds are getting inside.
It's a wide-open building-
Yeah.
-with an open truss-
Yeah.
And they're sitting on the trusses, on the horizontal members of the trusses and pooping on everybody.
Mm-hmm.
So to get them out of there-
I think the spikes would be better. Where the, where are they going to put the bird netting to keep them from going in there?
Underneath.
You put them on either side of a truss.
Yeah, that's going to look awful.
It does. That's why I recommend we do the-
I'd like to try the owls and the spikes.
But I'd rather have something in the budget for when it doesn't work than I can fall back to this. I can always take it out or not spend it.
I feel like there's something else we can do. I'd like it fully removed.
Which line, where, tell me again what it's under here.
Um, recreation, 35,000. I feel like we've gotten so far with our technology, we can come up with something better than netting to deter the birds.
Only, to me, it might, might look bad. It's a brand-new building. We're trying to rent it. If I have, and I'm just picturing as a set of circumstances, my daughter's wedding's out there in June, and we have all these tables set up with fine tablecloths and whatnot, and now we have birds pooping on them. Would you want that to be your daughter's wedding? I mean, it, we're trying to set the building up for a purpose and a use, and then we're removing the ability for it to function in a, in a sense. I, I think that a, as far as, you know, what this does and what it brings and how it even probably projects longevity to the building so that there isn't the detriment of, of what bird droppings can do to, to either support or, or trusses or, or, or just the ability to enjoy the building. I, I can't believe that you wouldn't have to hose that thing out once a week with, with the amount of birds that would be there. And I, and I would just reckon that to one robin's nest that sits on my front porch light. Now I'm going to multiply that times 20 at least.
Saying there's got to be a different solution that doesn't cost $35,000. I'm Googling it right now. Apparently, there's an automated bird repellent.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's other solutions that haven't been explored.
But you're, you're putting it up for a one-time cost and you're done. Other automations of whether it be something that sprays in the air or water that knocks them off, off a base, or, or spikes. Spikes limit your ability for decoration, and then there's also maintenance of those systems. So while it may be less than out of the gate, I think overall, through the life of, of that building or the use of that system, you're still going to be pretty close to what 35,000 is.
I have three before this meeting is done. Other options that can be tried?
Your motion is out there, and it's, and it's seconded, and we're, we're in a discussion, not an argument.
I'm not on it.
And we're also debating the, the possibility of, of what we want to have within that building and where that cost is. For me, the 30, there's other areas where larger reductions make bigger, bigger impact for 35,000. I'm not saying it's a small amount by any means, but it, it's, it's not going to drag that down. You're going to have still $3.4 million. But it, it's a start, and your motion is out there, so further discussion.
Question.
I'm going to go Trusty Baum first.
So there are other systems out there. You can find them on the internet. That's great. They still cost something, and we need to put something in the budget to get them. Whether we make the final decision to go with X, Y, or Z, we still need to get something in the budget to pay for it. I don't know whether that is going to cost $10,000, $20,000, or 500 bucks.
Okay, I'll modify my motion to put it to 5,000 instead of 35. You buy a whole lot of plastic owls and fishing wire and any other things.
Are you staying with your motion, or are you making a, a motion to amend it? Because we have to go in a direction here.
I know, hold on, I'm thinking what would be easier. I'm making amendment to the motion to lower it from 35,000, or remove it altogether, to making it 5,000, stay in the budget.
All right, so-
No, modifying it from removing it altogether to-
Your motion was to read-
Correct. The original motion was, and now her amendment is to add 5,000. I mean, you made the motion, you can change your motion to just add 5,000, and if that's all right with the second, we can move with that motion. Is that something you want to do, or you want to go with your amendment? Okay, so motion to amend.
All right, second, whatever.
Dennis, discussion on the motion to amend. Trusty Kaminsky, you-
I, no, I'm just not going to say anything.
Going to wait until we're back to the motion?
Uh, I was just going to offer a suggestion, and actually, the, Scott brought this up, that as one possibility, and staff certainly doesn't have any issues with trying some other, other solutions, owls, other things like that, and, and you're in the discussion, something we'll, we'll absolut, we'll do before, whatever the, the board decides on the motions that are for it right now, it is something we'll do before going forward with the netting. If the board does leave the $35,000 in place and the owls and the other approaches or the spikes work, there are some other improvements out at Dinesville, some drainage, you know, maybe paving, some of the area that's now gravel around the perimeter of the building, and I think that if the, the other solutions work, we would probably come forward during 2022 to the, to the village board with some other suggestions of improvements that could be made at Dinesville using that funds and, or something else other than the bird netting.
So, let me just, and thank you for that. The question on the bird netting, is it completely cover the bottom cross full? All right, there's another reason I like that, and one of the reasons I like that is a, as a, as a youth, hanging out in the Milwaukee County Park system, there were opportunities to climb up into certain structures for certain reasons, and this kind of prohibits that.
You'd need a ladder to get up.
No, you don't.
All right, I want to see Dean do it.
I said as a youth, as a youth.
Repetitive subject.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Trusty Neurider.
Thank you. Mr. President, Scott, the $35,000 figure that comes in here, and I'm sitting here going both ways on it. And Dean has a solid argument that you want to find something that's going to permanently fix it and is in place, but in the same sense, I'm looking at a year where we have a significantly tight budget, a taxpayer looking at this thing, bird netting $35,000, I think is going to have a hard time figuring this out. But did you get more, did you get a quote on this, on the netting? Are you just roughing this, or where's this true cost really coming from?
Uh, we got a price from Batzner Pest Management, and again, they're helping us throughout the entire village as, as we're treating our buildings for all sorts of pests. And so we just went to them to get a figure. Again, as, as the budget moves along, you're just trying to put a dollar amount in so you kind of have a worst-case scenario that you're going to get the job done for this. Obviously, if the board puts this in here, staff would go out and solicit pricing and try to get more competitive on it. We're just trying to get a number in so that we've got something to work with. That did come from an expert.
Did they physically come out and look at the situation?
Yes.
Okay. And that was the, did they have a second recommendation?
We asked about audible, audible-type sounds that we could put out there. We didn't think about the owl. Very simple and nice, I like it. I think we should give it a try. That was a recommendation, and they, they brought, they brought some literature and different things in and showed areas where it's been used and it's not as tasteful as one might like, but it does a decent job, and it doesn't look as horrible as, as you might think.
And is this a problem just certain months of the year?
It's a fairly new shelter, you know, probably would need some more time to gauge how much of a problem it is throughout the year, but there has been, there has been some complaints, and there have been, you know, staff has noticed that they've gone out to, to treat the park, that there's been droppings on the floor and the tables and things.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Trustee Peeper.
So, do you have this problem at Kinderberg and at Fireman's Park for those open pavilions?
They're open pavilions, but they don't have a truss-style roof, so they're closed in the top. We have some areas where they nest on the top of the pillars and different things like that. It's a totally different type ceiling on the inside, so we don't have the issue.
Spazland used to have netting in the old pavilion. Spazland had a bird netting on the old pavilion.
And that's going back...
Many years, before we replaced it.
Yeah.
Oh, Amazon makes a plastic owl that is motion censored and lights up and has five stars. It is solar-powered and waterproof.
Solar-powered under the roof?
There's light.
Okay.
Forty-two bucks, buy ten of them.
Can we restate the amendment?
Motion to amend is to...
We just want to have it restated.
No, the motion to amend, the original motion was to remove the thirty-five thousand. The motion to amend was to bring back five thousand.
Okay, so we're at five thousand?
We're at five thousand to add five thousand in, and the original motion was to remove it completely.
Okay.
Further discussion. Trustee Hudson.
We spent three-quarters of a million dollars on this building. This building was the result of years of work by visionaries in this community. And here we are tonight, debating whether to have a budget item or not. Leave the money in. Of course, we'll search for a less expensive answer. But do we really want to sully this building and what we're trying to do in this community by being penny-wise and pound-foolish?
Trustee Myers.
Yes.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to amend. No further discussion? All those in favor, unless you're looking for a roll call? Okay, roll call vote.
Thank you.
Budget for another microphone.
Trustee Peeper, trustee Myers, trustee Baum, trustee Hudson, trustee Kaminsky, trustee Jan Miller, trustee Rick Miller, president Walter, Knight Rider.
Nay.
Well, I'm not gonna be in charge of having taxes go up, not even point seven.
Motion to amend is failed. Back to the original motion, which is to remove the line item completely. Further discussion. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Peeper, trustee Myers, trustee Baum, trustee Hudson, trustee Kaminsky, trustee Rick Miller, trustee Jan Miller, trustee Knight Rider.
Nay.
Motion fails.
Further...
If I could just make one point, too. The borrowing or the capital projects you fund in next year's budget does not affect next year's tax levy. It affects the tax levy in 2023, so I just want to make that clear.
Trustee Myers.
Make a motion to borrow three-point-four million dollars with the list that was provided.
You're making a motion to accept the list as presented?
Correct.
We don't.
Always take stuff out now.
That's fine.
Get it going in the right direction.
Motion made its second at discussion. Trustee Baum.
I'd like to discuss removing the UTV and drop-ins from the fire department budget.
You want to discuss that, or you want to make a motion to amend? Right now, the motion on the floor is to accept the borrowing, capital borrowing as currently presented.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make it a motion to amend.
Motion to amend is...
To remove the UTV and drop-ins.
Where are we at?
Fire department.
A drop-in?
Just forget some things.
Can anybody tell me what a drop-in is?
Tim, is that what the UTV is? It's like one of those, like a mini ambulance, kind of like you sometimes...
Not a meter.
Yeah, but you could go through the park and pick somebody up and get them to their ambulance.
The UTV.
Yeah, we lost that.
There's nothing in this budget that doesn't make sense.
The next one's...
Thank you again for all of it. That's fine, right. I have further discussion on the motion to amend.
Oh, is the brush truck part of the UTV? Is that a second vehicle?
He's not, it wasn't on his budget. It was on the fire department.
Right. It's all one component that has other things that it can be placed on it for other services.
So the UTV has drop-ins, which make it a brush truck drop-in?
Or in a small ambulance, or go look for the children in the forest kind of stuff.
Okay. Children, find the children in the forest.
Terry, I'll second.
Terry? Oh, for the amendment. Further discussion on the motion to amend. You gotta come up front. All right.
Hold the drill.
People want to hear.
I really probably shouldn't speak for the fire chief, but I think we're talking multiple vehicles here. Because the current battalion chief vehicle is being converted to a brush truck. Because the old brush truck went to auction a couple of years ago because it was no longer certifiable. That pickup truck they're converting has been in the fleet for a number of years. And he's looking to buy a completely standalone brush truck, like we normally would have and other departments have. And then the UTV is a multi-use vehicle for events and hard-to-reach areas where you can't get in with a pickup truck or a full-size.
So we're really talking about three items here?
Yeah.
For a hundred-and-forty-five thousand. Motion to amend is still to remove it. Thanks, Tim. Trustee Rick Miller.
I'm not sure that's exactly correct. The utility vehicle was going to be for brush fires and for ambulance service and for patrolling and et cetera. Trying to replace that because it's fast, it can get down railroad tracks, it can get through things very quickly without being a truck. A second vehicle is his Crown Vic replacement. John's driving all these vehicles in the fleet right now.
He gave...
Because he gave the truck up to the first responders or whatever. So he wanted one more staff vehicle, really, for the chief.
Wouldn't you guys have this document?
It was a UTV, and it was a replacement for the Crown Vic.
That's what the Crown Vic was. That was an old police car that they had painted.
Administrator Cracolo, can't you tell us exactly what this is for if it's on here?
I actually just texted the fire chief as well, just to clarify.
You have to have some sort of documentation and breakdown.
You could call back up the budget items for the fire department if you want to go through that, because it would be in that presentation.
Yeah, we did discuss this. I don't remember exactly off the top of my head. But I believe, well, first of all, the description of the UTV is accurate and the description of the staff vehicle. If I recall correctly, I believe that trustee Rick Miller is correct that there was additional equipment to modify the pickup truck. I know when I've had meetings with the, with the fire chief recently, he's got a water tank in the back of the truck that would be used for brush fires. So I think that, I believe it is two pieces of equipment. I texted the fire chief to confirm that.
Two or three pieces of equipment?
I'm texting to confirm. I don't want to, I don't want to say without, and give you the incorrect information.
Well, if we look at the detail of the summary of CIP expenditures, you have replace staff vehicle for eighty-five thousand, and you have add UTV for sixty. So it's two vehicles, and from that, there is something additional for the brush truck drop-in. Trustee Kaminsky, on the amendment?
Yes, on everything, actually, but the amendment in particular. This is why we generally don't approve capital budget at this point in time, and we wait. I mean, it would be nice to have the fire chief here to answer this, and there's no reason why we have to make this decision tonight. I think we can spin our wheels on all of these items all we want, and we're gonna have a totally different opinion in February, depending on what's happened in the interim. My thought would be, if it were me, to move on to Grape's presentation or something that we might have information on.
And actually, to just get here back from the fire chief, the one-hundred-and-thirty-five is comprised of one vehicle at eighty-five thousand dollars, which would be an equipped emergency response vehicle for the fire chief to drive, and one, one UTV with the supporting equipment at fifty thousand dollars. So there are two vehicles, not three.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. No further discussion? I guess we'll do a roll call again.
This is to remove the UTV drop-ins and brush truck?
No. This is...
Just the UTV and drop-ins?
Oh, yes, it is. You're correct. I'm sorry. Yes, you're correct. Sorry.
Trustee Baum? Trustee Knight Rider?
Yes.
To remove, this is to remove. Trustee Hudson? Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Jan Miller? Trustee Rick Miller? Trustee Myers? Trustee Peeper? President Walter.
Nay. Voted nay on your motion? Okay, back to the motion as presented, which is to approve the capital as, or the line items as shown. Further discussion. Trustee Knight Rider.
I, you know, I guess for me, it's hard to accept borrowing, period. It's just out of my background, and it's, I guess, my upbringing. I guess I blame my father for that. But it's hard for me to accept borrowing because it's always easy to borrow money to buy things, but there is a cost to borrow. And while it's not going to affect, and I'm not saying to borrow nothing, but while there's a, there is a cost to it, and while it's not going to affect the 2022 budget, it's going to affect the 2023 budget. And I don't know what the interest cost is going to be on this. I don't know if there's any type of projection to show this, but I don't think we're borrowing a zero percent interest here. So I guess I have a problem with that, and when I look at the overall budget, then to reduce the levy or, you know, we can say, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna bring down the tax rate a nickel or whatever. I think you got to reduce the tax levy, so if we don't do it here on capital projects, where's our other alternative? To go back into most of the operational expenses, am I correct?
You can go line by line through the operational expenses if you like, or you could make... In the past, there has been blanket statements made from other trustees or the board has chosen at that time that they would like to see a reduction of X amount, whether it be two-hundred thousand, three-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand, and then it is for the staff to look at it line by line and come back as to how they did that.
So I guess there's, you know, there's two avenues to go here, and one is either to go on these projects or to go back into the operational side if we're serious about reducing the budget. I mean, I gotta be honest with you, and I'll blame myself. I could have walked across the street and voted no against the Germantown High School budget. They chose to increase their budget. And I think after, you know, an eighty-million-dollar addition and everything else, I think they have a responsibility to taxpayers, and we all do, whether it's the county, Moraine Park, or whatever. I think in today's world, we have a responsibility to try and bring budgets down. And, and, you know, to me, there's gonna have to be some hard decisions that are made yet, and President Walter, and I know what you're saying. We could, at some point, come down with another mountain, say, staff, figure it out, come back to us. And that's, that's probably the best way than us sitting here and playing, you know, games with this here. But I think we have to do something, because our taxes are just too high here, and the residents that have talked to me have said that's one thing they want to see down is taxes. And like I said, I'm disappointed Germantown School District didn't give it any serious consideration at all. I'm hoping yet that somewhere here, whether it's here or in the operational side or whatever, that we can at least come to some agreement as time goes along here. Thank you.
Trustee Peeper?
Go ahead, Terry. No, I wasn't called on.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Couple of comments. First of all, point of order, can I make an amendment to put off considering the borrowing?
You can table.
Even though I seconded the first motion.
You can, well, you could, you could make a motion to postpone it, or you could make a motion to table it.
It would have to be an amendment, because there's a motion on the table.
You could just, you could just say, I make a motion to postpone, or I make a motion to table.
I'm gonna make a motion to postpone the discussion on capital items specifically until a future date, as we normally would look at this.
If I could just add a piece of information on that, what the village board has, what you have before you tonight is the budget. And it is, we don't, you don't have the borrowing authorization resolution in front of you. And to approve borrowing, it is a specific legal document that has to be prepared and put before the board. So you, I don't believe you can, you can approve borrowing this evening. You can approve the budget, and that's where staff starts with preparing the authorizing resolution, but that is not in front of the village board tonight.
Make motion to postpone the discussion of the capital budget until a future date.
She made its second at discussion. Trustee Peeper.
Don't we have to vote on Dennis's motion first?
Not to postpone or table.
Taylor takes consideration.
Right.
Okay.
Discussion? Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed?
Do I still have the floor?
Uh, no, but I could...
That was, I had another comment, but I'll...
Okay, if you have a comment, go ahead.
In response to some of the discussion we've had here tonight about this budget, having been on this board for a number of years, I can tell you how tight this budget is. I think it's incredible what Steve has done over the past three years on this budget. And, well, the three years in particular on this budget.
Yes.
And this year, to not come up with any increases at all, while our village is expanding and growing, I think that is absolutely remarkable, that everybody gave up something in every department, and that's one of the things we're gonna look at next, is the parking lot. But I don't think you will find any other community around here that is more conservative and more diligent about trying to provide value to constituents, not stripping the budget, not just saying, go back and take out another two-hundred thousand, because then you're gonna start eating into repaving roads, fixing potholes, how good your plow service is gonna be. Are you gonna cut staff? I mean, we don't want to cut like that anymore. We have what I would call a very basic, not bare bones, but a very conservative... We, we have what I would call a very basic, not bare bones, but a very conservative budget in this village. And I'm totally in support of what I see on, over the past three weeks, having attended each of these meetings and been a part of these discussions, I'm impressed. And I just want to go on record saying that. I think you, you both have done a tremendous job, as has every department head in this village.
Trusty Peeper?
I'd like to say there's always room for improvement. And if the school board is raising their budget, it's going to raise my taxes. And if my taxes are going to be raised, I'd like to see the village do something about it and lower theirs.
Most of what the school board is raising their taxes for, or actually what their levy is for the two hundred thousand dollars that they're going to be using for operational costs.
I don't care what they're raising it for. If they're raising it, we should lower it. I want to see our residents' taxes evening.
Preparation of, of their projection and their, and their ability to create a, advance, I mean, I, I'm not even going to go there. I want to let it go. Who had their hand up? I'm sorry. Trusty Baum?
Matt and Steve, can you identify of the point seven percent increase? What portion of that is strictly due to personnel increases and expenses and people? I don't need it now, but for the next meeting, I'd like to understand. We're giving pay raises out because our staff needs it.
Public hearing.
I'd like to know how much of this is simply generated by payroll increases.
Well, okay, so if you look at the general fund overview on your spreadsheet, I do have expenditures by category and it displays the difference or the change in the 2021 budget compared to the 2022 budget.
What, what paid? What?
The very first tab.
First tab.
If, if you're on the. Very first tab. General, general fund?
But I, I think actually, if the question you're asking is what's in the money, what's in the budget for pay increases, that is, that's budgeted under general government.
Oh, it's, yes.
And what is that dollar amount? It's two point five percent.
Think the dollar amount? Two hundred forty thousand? I, I have to double check. I don't have it in front of me.
And that is when you, when you look at, at the point seven percent increase, it doesn't even cover what we'll likely need for police and fire contract increases.
So point seven percent, which is our current increase, doesn't even cover the cost of police and fire?
Correct.
Correct. That's what I need to know.
Explain to me what the ninety-five thousand that was mentioned earlier is?
So when, when I put together the, the budget, the directive was to use the net new construction value that we get, which is, which is levy money, but not include the value that comes from the TIFs. So each year, the Department of Revenue gives us our net new construction compared to the following year. And this year is two point five four percent. What I did was I subtracted the value that came from the TIDs, which brought that net new construction down to one point five six, one point five four, or something like that, which had a value of a hundred seventy thousand dollars. So I used that levy in, in this year's budget, but not the ninety-five thousand that comes from the TIDs.
Okay. Thank you. Or? We did. That was this document here. That's right. That happens. Anything else under item J? Anything else? Capital items presentation and including presentation by Grape. All right, then we can go to review of parking lot items.
Before you, you have a variety of items that were removed from the budget just based on the parameters we were given and to balance the budget. On the left side, you'll see there's a total of four hundred forty-one thousand dollars in projects that were removed. In addition, you'll see if, the amount of monies you have based on the insurance savings and the TID in value. I'll say with the insurance savings, that money is just a rough estimate. It can be more, depending on which the board decides.
When you say that based on the, on the insurance savings, isn't the true insurance savings one twenty-three?
One twenty-three, correct.
Right, but then from that you're looking.
Based on the recommendation.
Based off of one, two, and three, which then leaves, one and two, which then leaves forty?
Yes.
Or you could choose not to do one and two and still have a hundred and twenty-three available without accepting any of the parking lot items? Which would then, usually a hundred thousand is about a point to the, about every hundred thousand is about a full point to the, to the levy, usually. Reduction plus or minus. And that, it's not an exact science, but when you're trying to think about how, what you're taking away or what you're increasing by, it gives you a good quick calculator to what you're figuring. You're either reducing or increasing that levy by. Trusty Rick Miller?
There's a few other options for funding, is that right? Like, we do have a surplus from 2020. Possibly from 21, but we don't know that yet. We have some of the, is it ARPA?
Correct.
Money. So there are some options here without touching the levy. And that's my point. I'm not saying we're going to use it. I just wanted to point that out, that we may have other funding options. And there may be something on the list here that we want to fund.
Which we, we could use those other funds for to cover what's been removed from the budget.
Uh, true. We also have a pretty big rainy day fund. Which we have never touched and I know that a lot of that is earmarked, not, I shouldn't say earmarked, but it's a possibility to be used for future capital projects.
Yeah, but as a possibility, or to reduce borrowing for large building projects.
Right. Yep.
One of the things as we look over the budget and I, and I do appreciate looking at something that's at about point seven increase, because it does mean that all the department heads have looked at it closely and, and scrutinized it to the point of, of minimizing the increases as much as they could. There is always that, that amount that is automatically increased when you're dealing with insurance, wages, costs to operate, whether it be electrical or, or any type of utilities. So those increase on a regular basis. It's nice to see that there is an availability of a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars in savings in regards to what we saw for insurance and the possibility of rebidding that. It's always nice to think about what other things you can spend that on. But in some cases, you can also look at it as a way to apply it against the levy so that maybe it's not a point seven, maybe it's less than that, maybe it's zero. I know that within the last year, we went to the limit of the levy increase and I don't think we did the year before, but I think we used some of it. So in the last two budget sessions, we've either took the full amount that was available to us in 2020 for 2021, or we used a portion of it in 2019 for 2020. With what we've heard or what each of us may have heard from residents and what we know other components of the property tax bodies are doing, it may be a year to look at zero. Where there's no increase coming from the village and is that accomplished through the a hundred and twenty-three? Or do we say, as, as Trusty Kaminsky said earlier, she doesn't like to do, but I think it's better to have the people that have to deal with the outcome of our decisions make recommendations of what other areas could be reduced, rather than us to say, I'm taking away bird netting or I'm taking away these three vehicles because I think it makes the number that I want to make. If we say that we, as a board, and this is, this is not a motion, it's just discussion, that we'd like to see zero increase in the levy and what is that dollar amount and then form the budget to, to make that happen? That, that's something we could consider. But if everyone's comfortable or a majority of us are comfortable with point seven, then we can go ahead with the point seven and, and run that for publication. That's where the next item comes as to what is going to be produced and at what, at what numbers. So it's, it's something to consider. It is a time to consider those things. Otherwise, you can also bring them forward at the time of the public hearing and where we approve the budget, which we've seen before as well. Or other, other unforeseen revenues have come forward where the, the state may have changed the formula and we ended up with more in one way than we expected and it's offset some, you know, some of the increase in the levy overall. And we've seen that too. But this is not the only place that this can happen is really my point. But something to consider now and make that a motion going forward, or we can also discuss it and go through it at the time of the public hearing where we approve the budget, which is November eighteen. Need a calendar? It's gone. Yes. Okay, so as we look at the review of parking lot items, is there anything anybody would like to suggest? Trusty Baum?
Well, a couple of thoughts on that. One, first of all, I, I agree, we, we shouldn't be using one-time revenues for that. I think there are a couple of options that the board has. One is you could use the hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in insurance savings to fund the one hundred and eighteen thousand for the police officer. A second option would be to fund half of that out of that one hundred and twenty-three thousand, fund half of the one hundred and eighteen and funded for six months. We could hire the new police officer mid-year. And then, but that, and then you basically be giving staff the direction to find the second half of that in the 2023 budget to fully fund it. That's something that we've done before and, and I think we'd be able to, to make that work. So I think there'd be a couple of options with that.
I'll go ahead and try it. I'll make a motion that we take from the parking lot items, the additional police officer for the amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Use half of the funds from the one hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars and staff the officer starting mid-year.
Second. Say it again. What Steve said.
I just want to.
I, I want to bring on an additional officer.
Yeah.
And to pay for that officer during the 2022 year, I will hire that person mid-year, so I only need half of that value in 2022. That fifty percent B would come out of the hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar insurance savings.
That's what Steve said.
Yes, I, I believe that's, I believe it's, yeah.
Good.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
We should need a second.
I already seconded it. He was clarifying.
Discussion. Trusty Hudson?
I want another police officer too. However, I, I think the funding mechanism will most certainly work in 2022, however, because nobody can, what healthcare costs are going to do in 2023. So I'd, I'd be hesitant to, to do that.
Trusty Myers, you had your hand up?
No, no, no.
Oh, yeah? Okay. Trusty Kaminsky?
I agree with Trusty Hudson. It's, it's, it's really no different than taking our surplus and trying to pay for this man. It's surplus in an insurance fund. And we don't know what our insurance is going to cost this year or next year really yet, but we know how much this police officer is going to cost and we have no way of sustaining that at this point in time in 2023. We don't know what's going to happen. I would like to see the chief come in and give the entire presentation as he said he would. He did not appear to be in a huge rush to do this. And so therefore I will not support it and, well, I'll, I'll leave my next comment for something more appropriate. It doesn't really fit this topic.
If I can make a clarifying comment, the one twenty-three is not a one-time savings. That'll be an annual savings.
Every year, you're going to have that?
Yeah, so we went out to bid and got, I won't say every year we got this, but our, the annual contract.
Guaranteed next year, we have a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Guaranteed.
That is a, that is a contract that, that we did go out to bid and, and we do have that proposal, which we're going to recommend to the board that you accept.
How many years does that go?
It's a one-year, it's a one-year contract that does, there is a potential that it goes up the following year.
Or we switch again.
Or we switch.
I mean, healthcare is like one of the greatest unknowns right now. I, I would not bank on that at all. A proper, oh, okay.
Right.
That's a little better.
Right. Trusty Hudson's was not knowing where healthcare would be and cost-wise in 2023.
Does that change your opinion if it's not a healthcare issue? Change your argument?
I still like to hear from the chief.
I would too, but I've been hearing about this for years that we are understaffed in the police department. We're.
First year, I've heard it.
I've been hearing it for years.
He added an officer, was it last year or the year before? But it's, this is your motion. Further discussion? Trusty Myers?
Actually, the, the police chief said he needed three people to change his new operations schedule as such. Being on the police and fire commission for fifteen years, understanding that situation, we give, taking care of the fire department in the past, a lot of different things, but we need to have this. These are the people that protect us, the community.
Usually.
I like the motion. I'm sorry.
The top priority of why people pay properties taxes, most important listed is always public safety.
Amen.
Trusty Hudson?
I too would like to see the formal presentation in detail before we make this determination. Didn't think he, maybe this is wrong. I think he said we're fine right now. He did not say that this was an immediate. He'd say it was a need for.
A structural change.
A structural change and I think.
So, go ahead.
We might be putting the cart in front of the horse here. Based on some of what his needs are. He, he hasn't come with a formal proposal yet. He's come to us with an idea.
Right. And he could make that presentation possibly, once the village administrator could confirm that at the next village or the first village board meeting in November. And that would give us opportunity to, to think about it. And then if those changes still want to be made, it could be made in the time of the public hearing and the approval of the budget on the second meeting of the village board. Further discussion? Trusty Baum?
Just pointing out that when he does come and ask for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
He's not going to turn down one.
I didn't, I didn't, and, and again, maybe this was my perception of his presentation. He wasn't going to ask for three people at one time. I thought that this was going to be a phased, phased in. Is, was my take.
If I can just jump in and, and say that the presentation that the, the chief Snow gave was a, a more comprehensive restructuring that included, you know, adjusting the, the management structure, the staffing levels. There was a net increase of three positions and it was, I believe, in the ballpark of three hundred and sixty thousand. We talked about some, some possibilities. How do you get from where we are to there? Like we, we mentioned, you could do a referendum. You could take it to the public and, and, and see if there was support for, for the, the increase. It, it is something that, you know, would be possible for, if you shifted things around, like for example, the public. like for example, the public fire protection fee. Not that I want to bring that up again, but, um, but that is something that, that would be possible. And the third option that we brought up was doing it incrementally and adding, um, you know, one officer per year or a half an officer or trying to, to do it incrementally, which I think is, is more complicated. But all, those are, those are options for trying to, to get to the ultimate goal that, that chief Snow presented.
There is still on the parking lot item, one additional officer at 118 that was taken out of the budget.
Well, and let me clarify that. This is, uh, this, that particular parking lot item is different than the rest. We did not take a, an officer out of the budget request, but at that first budget meeting, there was a request from the village board that we come back with what is the full cost of adding an officer, including salary, benefits, equipment, et cetera. And we put that on the parking lot list, so it had a place on the agenda.
Okay. Further discussion. Steve Myers.
Yeah, again. I was going to say that I had this question. I was looking for the chief this afternoon, but he was on vacation, so I did talk to the captain. You know, as such, and I asked him in regard to the situations you brought up in regard to what Manominee Falls has. And he had said that the chief would not be in favor of that because we don't get that many kind of calls that would add to that particular situation. But, um, just, but here again, I got that information. You need the, the other eight of you and that's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion, trustee Hudson.
I'd like to make a motion to table this decision until after we see the formal presentation by the chief.
To postpone or postpone?
Table or postpone? Table? I don't, table is no discussion, postpone allows discussion.
Table.
Okay. Motion is made to table and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Not opposed, motion carries.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
It's.
We're still on parking lot items as part of the, uh, agenda.
It's a more like umbrella that affects the parking lot items? Can I ask that or is it a financial question?
It's all about the budget, so go ahead.
So I have it in my head. So we have $123,000 savings this year from Workman's Comp Property Insurance. We have $40,000 that we know is just kind of sitting out there.
Nope, that, that 40 is part of that 123.
Ah, so my 40 went away. Okay, so the 40 is in, in the 123. And then we have a surplus, we think.
From 2020 year end, yeah.
Of somewhere between 200 and 300,000.
Correct.
That we won't really firmly get our arms around for another short period of time. So we have about potentially 300 and some to $400,000 sitting that we could potentially use. Can the surplus from the previous year be used to offset taxes? And we just say, if you throw that into the budget and. I like that. Can that be done or is that not good policy?
That would, that would be a, a concern because you're using a, a one-time, uh, source of revenue.
Same thing? Yep, gotcha, okay, can't do it. So we should use that on things we really think we need.
And I would say one-time expenses, you know, uh, buying it, the first one on the list, clerk's office equipment, that's a one-time expense. Using surplus for that is something that, that would, that would be a, a good use of those.
Pulling things off our capital budget.
Pulling things off the capital budget.
I think I would rather see it used for that. Not that we have to make that decision tonight, but.
We don't know what that number is yet.
We'll know by November.
Sure.
We'll know by the next meeting what that number is.
I see him.
Well, capital items, something that's not reoccurring.
Did you make a motion or was that just a comment? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. No, I, I would, I would like to wait, personally, I would like to just take a look at all this myself, knowing that we can wait until the first meeting in November and then decide what we want to apply this to on the capital budget and all that up again.
Are you looking to have, uh, an item placed onto the first meeting in November to have further discussion on the budget?
Yes.
Is it a regular meeting?
I wouldn't even carry another committee of the whole, frankly.
We have another whole.
We'd use it.
I would think so.
Could we do a committee of the whole next week?
We'll, we'll ask village attorney which way it needs to happen.
Or you could have a, could schedule a committee of the whole meeting on the first before the regular village board meeting. That would probably be the best way to appro.
Wait, wait, wait. Trustee Jan Miller.
I have a general question. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. General Fund Parking Lot Items. It says the total is about $441,000.
Right.
Okay, of all of these.
Yep.
And can, may we use the TID in $95,000 over here toward any of these capital projects?
Yes.
Okay.
Or, or in that case, or operating expenses because that TID in 95,000 is a reoccurring revenue.
Okay.
If you put that on the levy this year, that would be in the, that would be in the base in future years.
Okay.
So you're adding it to the levy.
Increases taxes.
Correct, okay, correct. However, if we, if we, to Terry's point, if we have 200 to 300,000 dollars excess, ex, excess, could we use those monies toward some of the parking lot items?
Yes, yes.
Capital items, any.
Exactly.
Everything would be probably more acceptable except for the police officer addition.
Right, because that's reoccurring.
Right.
And in addition, as Rick mentioned, we have the ARPA monies that has not been identified and we will be getting extra, I mean, additional ARPA monies coming in, in 2022. Is that correct? For, and the, and both deposits must be used by December 31st, 2024.
Right, that's correct. Trustee Hudson.
Can we take the $300,000 and give it back to the taxpayers in the form of a check?
The answer, to answer the question, y- yes, you can. Or you can use it to reduce the tax, taxes. I mean, be, well, we, we tried that once and the answer was, um, no. Or, or you can, you can suggest, you know, a different levy amount. Right now we're at a .7 increase. You could suggest zero or minus five or whatever. I mean, it's, it's up to the board to decide what they want that levy to be set at and then the budget would conform to, to what it is. Right now it's at .7 as it stands, no changes.
Without, without using the carryover money, correct?
It's not, correct, but it's still an increase. Right, I agree with you.
It's, the, the, the budget is solely for the year. We're not using the $300,000 as carryover. It's still sitting there and.
Correct.
Can we keep the .7 levy the way it is? Give the citizens back the $300,000.
The, the one, I, I would want to have a conversation with the village attorney about that. I, I think, I, I think that the, the broad answer is, is yes, but I think that there may be some limitations or it may be a little bit more complicated than that.
It'd probably have something to do with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Changing, I, I don't want the attorney's input.
I mean.
Not a bad idea, but it, it, I think it needs total flushing out.
I don't know if, I mean, the, the, the body of property taxpayers changes each year. You know, the, the people who paid the property taxes for the 2020 budget, some of them no longer live in Germantown. I don't know if we would have to try to identify who those, the, I, I'm just, I think in general the answer is yes, but I'm not sure of, of what the specific requirements would be of, of doing something like that.
If we use the population of 20,000, it's $15 per.
Per person.
Per person, not per household. So you'd have to look at it, would it be per household? And I think the household is 55,000.
There's also the possibility that it may interfere with the ARPA money because one of the conditions of accepting the ARPA money is that do not use it to, um, to, to reduce or, or refund property taxes.
That's 20.
I gave it to the residents, we gave it to the tax.
20 property taxes, that's a different fiscal year, correct?
Correct, but we would be doing it in the year that we have ARPA money. So it, the, from an accounting perspective, if the, the, when that money, i- i- it's in essence, you're using reserves. It's, the 2020 is over, that money is a surplus. It is part of the, the village reserves.
Right.
So you're.
It's, it's not a surplus from the taxes collected, it's a surplus from unseen revenues.
Prior years, that's correct. I'm, I'm sure our new $300,000 financial management software could straight.
Well, it's, it's not a matter of, of, of whether or not we can keep it straight. It's, it's a matter of the ARPA rules.
I under, I under, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
See.
And it, it is, it is $13 a person. And I just want to point out that that offsets two quarters of the water rate increase that we just gave to our citizens. So, so you're, you're saying it's $13 per person.
Well, per resident, but you'd be dealing, if, the money would go back to the, to the, it wouldn't go back to, residents, it goes back to the property owners.
I understand that, I understand that.
Right, who also pays the water bill, right? Further, um, trustee Norreiter.
Mr. President, um, just, just a question. What would be to get down to 0% levy increase? How much would we have to reduce otherwise?
That amount is 93,000.
$93,000.
Mm-hmm.
Could, and I'm probably in the minority here, but could we at least, not saying it's going to happen, but could staff look at this and so that the next time we meet, we would have what we would probably have to cut if we had to do that?
What I, what I would recommend, um, without taking the, you know, any additional time is you have the 123,000 in savings from the lower than expected insurance costs. You could use 93,000 of that savings and reduce the, the levy increase to zero.
Make a motion to that too. Wait, wait, Mr. Norreiter has a floor.
Well, all we'd have to do is use 93,000 of that.
Right, and, and I would, I would recommend keeping the remaining money in the, um, uh, so that we could reduce what we've budgeted for the state aid payments because we do know that's going to be a little bit lower. That was the bad news that we got.
Mr. President, I'll, I'll move at this point in time to put a motion out there that we get to a zero increase in the tax levy by reducing the.
Savings?
Savings from the insurance and using only 93,000 of that.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Trustee Kaminski.
If, if we support this, because it sounds so great, in our next meeting, we can still go back because we still have some surplus and still change things, correct?
Well, you still can attack this, sure.
Yeah. With whatever our surplus is because we're agreeing to 0% increase.
What you're agreeing to is, is what is going to be published.
Yeah.
As part of the public hearing. That's what you're agreeing to.
So if, if we're saying it's zero, then it's got to stay zero.
No, no, it can, it still goes, it gets posted, it gets posted as zero. And then it comes to public hearing and then the board can choose.
To raise it again.
If.
That's not going to happen.
If you so choose or if, but it's not approved until you go through the, the public hearing. Tonight's purpose is to come up with something for publication.
Yeah. I, I just, if I still have the floor, I.
You do.
I think it's great if we can do that, but I also think that there are things in here that we still need to do.
Sure.
And I know we're only using 123,000, so I suppose we still have the 200,000 to offset some things.
Here.
But I don't want to paint us in a corner if we're still going to get a police chief's discussion at the next meeting and all these other discussions. We already decided we're going to postpone some significant decisions until the first November meeting and that's why I can't vote for this right now. I potentially could in that first November meeting, but I can't right now.
What, understand your argument. What it does is it allows, it, it shows from the work done from the budget meetings that we've come forward for a publication notice for public hearing with a 0% levy increase. That's what it brings forward. At the time of, of public hearing or even at the next committee of the whole meeting, if, whether it's on the first Monday of, of November, that can change.
So nothing has been published.
Not yet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, then it can be looked at and at the time of the meeting at the second, it can then be.
After it's been published as 0%, do you really think that we feel like we can add anything onto that?
Do whatever you like.
If the police, no, I, I just, I think that's bad optics. I wouldn't do it and I don't feel comfortable with that decision tonight and I won't vote for it.
Why is it bad? I understand, explain to me bad optics.
It's my personal decision, Mr. President. The bad optics to me are, I would never go back if we, if this 0% would be approved tonight and published as that where people read it and then we come back and start loading things on it. That would not look good. That's what I'm saying, but I want to have all the information and then I will likely support it, but not with all the information. I hate that, again, that, when, when, when the cart gets ahead of the horse here.
I don't think we're that far ahead of the horse yet.
You are for me.
Okay. Honest, okay. Further discussion, trustee Hudson.
I do, I, I. Idea. So understand that we would ourselves somewhat into a corner. Go out there and say it's zero, 0%. Just locking ourselves in. But I, I, I do want to restate, should be the goal.
Further discussion. Trustee Rick Miller.
So, a lot of numbers flying around here as usual and you can make numbers, say whatever you want. A .7 increase is still a decrease in the mill rate. We had a property value increase of two and a half percent. Is that right? And, and that's with the TID, so.
With the TID, yes.
All right, so one point.
1.56, I think.
1.5% and we raised it .7. So that's a decrease in the mill rate.
Yes.
We're already decreasing the mill rate or your net tax with a .7 increase. I get trying to get to zero, but this is insignificant.
Further discussion, trustee Jan Miller.
I agree. I, I feel like we, we have further discussion that we can do. I think the police is very important. Public safety is number one to hear from them. And as Rick Miller stated, it's still a decrease. And I think that all of the directors have done a fabulous job of coming back to the village board and presenting a, a tough button. And I think that if we have more information, we can make, we can make the zero a goal. But I think the .7 is, is favorable. Thank you.
Further discussion. I understand the argument of optics and I also understand, as we all known, as we've walked around, uh, the understanding of residents and, and taxes. When you start talking about mill rate versus levy versus assessment increase, in most cases, all they want to know is what is, what's the end number? What is it going to be when I get my bill? And I, I think it'll, it, overall, I think the, I think the property taxes are, will increase slightly when it's all said and done, just based off of possibly of what the school board has decided already. But it's always nice to, to say to ourselves, but at least it wasn't by our hand. So it's, it's something to consider. Do I like the optics? Do I like the optics or the visual of of us proposing a 0% levy increase? I do. I do, because that's what a lot of residents have asked for, asked for us to do is to to look for ways to to propose no increase. My taxes are high enough. Please do what you can to propose zero increase. So their optics are when they see 0% increase levy from the village board is there's no increase. I understand the rest of the argument because we understand it because this is what we do. But your best misconception out there is for other people or you assume other people know what you know because you're in the know. And I would I would prefer us to publish a 0% increase in the levy. That that's my opinion. Trustee Baum.
Part that I have concerns about is get the numbers that have been presented to me. Just pick out 125,000 dollar number. It last year they paid $598 for 125. This year they're paying 592. Based on our numbers, your taxes went down. Though we had a 7% increase, 0.7% increase.
And it and the argument back that you might hear, I don't mean to step on your 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 point here, is utilize 123,000 in savings and then you found a quick way to spend it.
You asked me to hold your taxes. Taxes. Didn't. We didn't spend that 123 lightly. We've argued for four hours, three hours on what to do this money.
Times three meetings, yeah.
It's not as though, hey, you got another $500,000 to spend it. Let's go buy something. We don't do that.
Oh, I understand that.
We've been scrutinizing this. And we, that's why I asked what these numbers are because when the phone calls come, hey, we lowered your taxes by $6. Go talk to your school board representative. Go talk to your county representative.
But you increased your cost by 0.7.
I held your taxes.
You know, you've got to go through the formula. I understand formulas. You're you're speaking to the choir. Now you're talking to a resident.
Yeah.
But you increased your levy by 0.7.
We held your taxes.
And my bill is up.
No, it's not.
It it.
Based on this.
I don't know yet.
You don't know.
I'm I'm just playing devil's advocate, so that's fine. I understand. I understand all the points and the arguments. I understand them.
I simply say, let's just wait for all the information and then we'll make the final decision.
Further discussion. Trustee Kaminsky.
This is the last thing I'm going to say, because I may have falsely pretty soon. I I really, I agree with the board members who want to wait until the next meeting because I think it makes the most sense. We may come up with 0% increase, but I also agree with those of us who are saying the 0.7% is a decrease. You know, I mean, so why don't we look at all this stuff and do our homework and come back with fresh minds and really decide, are we just going for the optics of 0% or are we doing what's right for the village? Because I think this is an extremely well-done, tight and well-managed budget.
Further discussion. No further discussion? Roll call vote, please. You're voting on us, the taking the money 123, 849 and reducing it by 97? 93 to to allow a 0% levy increase for publication? You're voting on?
I hope I was still on floor.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Voting in favor of it.
Trustee Peeper.
Yes.
Trustee Baum. Trustee Hudson.
Nay.
Trustee Kaminsky.
Nay.
Trustee Jan Miller.
Nay.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Nay.
Trustee Myers.
No.
Walter.
Aye. Okay. So anything else in regards to review parking lot items?
I don't mean to drag discussion out of there was there was a capital fund parking lot items. For reference.
Two items. That were removed from the the borrowing?
That were removed.
Oh. Okay.
What?
Aye. You guys can walk out now if you want. Um, you know, it's your choice is what I mean. I'm not asking you to. All right, anything else? Review of parking lot items. Then we're into the next area of publication with the 2022 budget public hearing notice.
The design for County Q and Landon Road. Is that something that we can put back into the budget if development comes forward?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I can leave that out for now then. Thank you.
It also, could we also use the funds from federal government for purchase of community park? That's what that is?
That well, well, that was the Recre Park and Rec Commission identified $1 million for purchase of of property to add to the park system. That was proposed or included in the recommended or included in the budget request as a borrowed item. It's possible, depending upon what land and for what purpose, that ARPA money could potentially be used for that. But again, we we'd need, we would need more specifics before we could state one way or another whether it be possible.
Okay. Anything else? Trustee Hudson.
I just, I just want to talk about so our communities becoming open space, single development. We are never going to undevelop. So if we have the goal of space and preserving Germantown, to start looking at acquiring like 20 or 50 years from now, parks are going to be exactly what they are today, serving forms as many. This is one of those issues. Have to have some vision. I I am saying this year. Every year in our community is going to get more difficult because there is going to be less and less land to turn into parks. Please remember, please think 20 and.
Trustee Byers.
In regard to the other parking lot items that we have, with that last motion, that was just in regard to one item on there. Are we done with the parking lot items? We're not going to be dealing anymore with that?
Yeah. Yes, until we know what type of surplus we have and what we want to apply it to.
Here. Yeah, okay, good. Thank you.
Trustee Baum.
In regards to the community park 2050 plan, when we've been talking to other developers, we are identifying in those new developments, talking about you have more open space. We need to have open space. It's not lost. But if we can have a developer set aside part of his land as opposed to us buying it when they try and develop, that's something we are looking at.
So I I live in a development that has 10 acres of open space. That is looked at for the residents of those of that. Do, did do subdivision is is a is a very good example. There's a difference between that and actual set aside parkland. I do like trend toward.
Trustee Jan Miller.
I agree with trustee Hudson. The the difference that I applaud that the new developments have space. The development that I live in has space. It is used for those residents within the development. But community parks are just so needed and one of our community parks currently has 200 acres of unusable land. And it would be, and it is right now, or the last publication of the Grave 2050 Plan, it was counted in the parkland and it really shouldn't be.
Which one?
Wilderness. You cannot wa, it's not accessible. And so it's something we still need open land. Acquire the open land. It doesn't have to be immediately developed, but it should be acquired in order to hold those spaces.
And I, go ahead.
And I believe that the property values are just going to go up and this is a good time to seize the day as we're looking around for industrial and commercial properties as well. So, thank you.
In regards to the 200 acres of unusable, this body can, meaning this board or committees within this board can push green seams to make it accessible. They've chosen to hold it and we've chosen to do nothing to force their hand. It's, to me, it's been a long time coming. And it was always proposed at the time it was created that its long-term use should be low-impact recreation. When? It's time to say when? And when is that going to happen? And I would I would put before this board of of how to pursue that and to make that happen because they have held those lands for a long time. And it is time to open it up to low recreation use, whether it's just hiking paths or nature walks or whatever, making an AT, I don't know why you can make it, but open it up because that's how it was promised. Trustee Kaminsky.
They let you walk in there, but it's mostly used by hunters. I mean, they're both in our neighborhood, Dave.
It's used.
And you'll see people hunting in there and that's pretty much it because there are no paths at all. And I cannot imagine Greenseam's going in there and doing anything. I guess he could walk a big circle around this.
We would have to create the paths.
Remember what we went through when we worked with Greenseam?
It was always proposed that it was supposed to be long-term use of a low recreational and, you know, we we've let it sit and with them for a while and nothing's happened. Doesn't mean it can happen. But it if that's an opportunity, I'm not saying it's it's only park that we should pursue. I agree that as as we look at at the land use plan and and as this community grows, we have to set aside more parks. Either by growing the ones we have or creating new ones in in areas of open green space. Trustee Baum.
Uh, those the paths are, there are paths in Wilderness Park. That somebody is mowing trails, but only through the prairie lands, not into the forested area. Yeah, because we we've walked them and my dog goes swimming in the ponds over there. And that's how the people, then you will see people park their pickup trucks parked in that pseudo parking lot every weekend. So it is being used, but by a select few group of people.
Most people don't even know where it is or that it is, you know, property that we own. Like, there's no sign. Uh, was going hand in hand with the park and the $1 or $1 million recreational community park discussion. No, but people wanted to add their comments to the to the comment of trustee Hudson. Anything else on parking lot items? Nothing else? Then we can go to publication of the 2022 budget public hearing notice. Requires a motion?
I would like to hold off with the publication.
Can't.
What do I do until, what do I do until after the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to publish it at the 0.7% as it currently stands.
Second. Oh shit, I think you got all motion. I don't care who you think.
Every, everybody talked over me. Do I not have the floor? Okay. I just wanted to know what I had to do. Do I have to make a motion?
Made and seconded. Discussion. No discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson. Jan Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Myers.
At mercy, yes.
No.
No.
Nay. Okay. Anything else? Any announcements anybody would like to make?
Mr. President, before you.
Like to have a discussion. Come on. Village administrator.
Then I guess I'm taking the feedback from the village board that will schedule a follow-up committee of the whole meeting before the village board meeting on November 1st.
Yes, yes, please.
Okay.
For what topic again?
What time?
Six.
Yeah, we'll we'll have to, we'll have to adjust the time. We have general government and finance at six. We could notice the village board meeting to start at at 7:30 or following the completion of the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
It's this Monday, yeah.
Oh. Oh, okay. I was thinking the meeting would be no, then then there is no GGF meeting. I would recommend.
Public safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first Monday usually. So but look at the schedule and we'll come up with some. All right. Any other announcements? We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you all for watching. Have a good night.